Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public meeting of the Halton District School Board for March 23, 2022. We are meeting remotely this evening. However, I'm sure that we will be looking at transitioning back to an in-person model as we move through these new and ever-changing times. For tonight, however, we are in the virtual environment and we will continue to have to navigate the weather. So I know that trustee Garrett has warned us of the difficult weather that's going on up north, which may create a bit of havoc on some of the more remote internet connections. So bear with us. We will continue tonight, though, to use a combination of Google Forms and Google Meets with the Hands Up function, so trustees are able to see the speaker's list on the side of their screen. And I will also try to give an account of the order that may be building, so people may be able to prepare their questions in advance. Trustees will be directing all their questions through the chair. And as always, a reminder of our rules of the road to guide us through our meeting to effectively and respectfully deal with the business of the board. We have also adjusted some of our voting procedures to use unanimous consent to make it a little bit more speedy. So I'm now going to take trustee role call, and I'm changing it a tiny bit. I'm going to go in reverse alphabetical order today. So we will start with trustee Vidilankara.
I'm here. Hi, everyone.
Hi there, trustee Rocha.
Here.
Trustee Reynolds.
Evening, everyone.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Gravance.
Right here.
Trustee Gray. So trustee Gray is one of our Northerns, so I don't know if it's an internet connection. We'll come back and see if she's here. Trustee Garrett?
I was able to get in. Thank you.
There you are. Trustee Garrett?
Here from Icy North Halton.
Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Hello, everyone. I'm here. Trustee Danielli.
Thank you. I am here.
Trustee Collard.
Good evening, everyone.
Trustee Bow.
Good evening, everyone.
And trustee Amos.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Director Ennis, could you please let us know the staff that are in attendance this evening?
Thank you, Chair Shottleworth, and good evening, everyone. I'm happy to report that we have a full slate of our senior team here this evening to support the meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. For tonight, trustee Garrett will be honoring the land for us. Trustee Garrett?
Thank you very much. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Atawarun to the Hodinisone and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful creations that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for their sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you so much, trustee Garrett. Are there any declarations of possible conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, we are now up to the agenda. There has been one amendment that manager Gortmaker has alerted me to. Item 5.2.6 on the agenda is an item that needs to come to the board twice, so it will now be moved to item 6.2.1. There are also a couple of minor tweaks that have had to be made as far as date changes and headings. So trustee Rocha, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I would. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And trustee Oliver, would you like to second this motion?
Yes, I do. Second. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any discussion on this motion? And then are there any objections to approving the agenda as amended? Great. Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Okay, we don't have any Inspire Awards to say thing. However, I would like to take this time to encourage everyone within the Halton District School Board community to continue to find those inspiring individuals and nominate them so they can be recognized for their outstanding contributions. You can find the nomination information on our HDSB website. That brings us up to the delegations, and we have one delegation this evening, which is Anne Graham, who is going to be delegating on the naming of the new Milton School. Is Anne present?
Madam Chair, she has not signed into the meeting yet.
So do we hmm? Let's see.
I've just admitted her. She's just logged in.
Wonderful. So that's timing. That's perfect timing. Good evening, Ms. Graham. I don't, I don't, can you, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Oh, awesome. And we can hear you. Good evening.
Thank you. Yes, I can. Great. Good evening.
If I may, Madam Chair, just a moment. To our delegate, if you have a speaker on on your computer, you're creating that feedback loop where you're hearing the meeting a couple of seconds later.
Okay. How's that? I have tech support right here with me. My niece is here.
Awesome. That's much better. Thank you so much. So welcome, Ms. Graham. Thank you so much for delegating. I'm just going to give you a little bit of an idea of what's going to happen tonight. So you have five minutes to present to the board. Um, we don't have a visual timer. It's just difficult in these times, but I will give you a one-minute warning. I'll wave my hands or something so that you can see, just so that you know where we are. We really are encouraging everyone to be mindful and respectful of the time. So out of the delegation, I'll open the floor to questions or comments from both trustees and staff, and there will be up to 10 minutes for questions of clarity. Um, and do you have any questions before we begin?
I don't. No, thank you.
Let me just get my timer ready to go. Excellent. Please begin.
Great. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity for me to speak to you about the school naming. My name is Anne Graham, and I'm the youngest of Dr. Donald Aikenhead's six children. My dad was born in Medicine Hat, Alberta in 1927. Sorry. He was the only child of Percy and Isabel Aikenhead, an accountant and a homemaker. He was a shy boy who kept himself busy with books. He continued his love of reading throughout his life, sometimes having several books on the go at one given time. As a student, he excelled at math and science and was the recipient of the Governor General's Academic Medal, which has become the most prestigious award that students in Canadian schools can receive. He continued his studies at the University of Alberta, and in 1945, he earned his honors physics degree. He soon realized that if he were to spend his working life in a physics lab, it may perpetuate his shyness. So he made the decision to pursue a medical degree, which would allow him to meet many different people from many different walks of life. He graduated in 1955 as a doctor of medicine. And in 1957, he opened a family medical practice in Milton when the population was under 5,000. Education was always important to him. He was a lifelong learner who never stopped wanting to learn more. There was always a medical journal on our kitchen table, which he would read from front to back, always learning, always craving new information. He attended medical seminars well into his 80s. My father was fluent in English, French, Italian, and Spanish. He learned to speak Italian shortly after he began practicing medicine, as many of his patients in Milton had emigrated from Italy and did not speak English. He also spoke French, which he learned in school. After he retired from his practice, he and my mother spent their winters in Florida, and my dad volunteered at several rural health clinics. The majority of his patients in these clinics were migrant workers from Mexico who did not speak English. So at the age of 64, he continued to demonstrate his commitment to lifelong learning by taking Spanish, so he could communicate more effectively with patients. He also traveled to St. Vincent in Haiti to participate in vaccination clinics and to provide medical care. His knowledge of different languages assisted him in these settings as well. In the early 1980s, when computers emerged on the technology front, he was very intrigued. I recall him being so eager to learn how to navigate different software and programs and continued his enthusiasm well into his 70s and 80s. He was a brilliant man who never backed down from the challenge to learn something new. His greatest joy throughout his career was bringing babies into the world. He had the privilege of bringing generations of Miltonians into the world. He is still remembered fondly by old Milton residents who may have had him as their doctor or may have just been looked after by him in the emergency ward at the hospital. He valued the privilege of assisting Milton families through their profaned life experiences, both happy and sad. My father is a piece of Milton's history, an icon in the Milton community, as described in an article written for the Milton Canadian Champion. He was a small-town doctor who his patients considered part of their family. He was one of the last doctors in Milton to do house calls. After his passing, hundreds of well-wishers visited the funeral home to thank our family for sharing our father with the community. Dr. Lynn Robinson, respected colleague, wrote, and I quote, "I was in awe of the sincerity, generosity, and dedication he showed not only to his patients, but to all whom he encountered in his professional and private life. To me, Don was always demonstrated a great willingness and desire to teach, mentor, and share his vast amount of experience in small-town medicine," end quote. My father passed away in May of 2017. I believe for someone to have a school named after them is one of the greatest honors possible. My father spent his entire life learning, teaching, and taking care of members of the Milton community. He would be so proud to see his name on a school in the town he loves so very much. My mother, who will be 91 next month, believes my dad would feel a school in his name would be right up there in the world. It would be wonderful to have his legacy recognized in this way and have his legacy live on through Milton's future bright stars and healthcare heroes. I thank you for your time and consideration. I look forward to your decision on the naming of the new school in Milton. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Graham. Um, are there any questions from any of the trustees for Ms. Graham? Well done, technical support, by the way.
Thank goodness for her. That's Catherine Aikenhead. Granddaughter-in-law of Dr. Aikenhead.
So I see no questions. So again, thank you so much for your delegation. So just so you have an idea, the naming of the new Milton School will come up during section 5.2.1, where the shortlist of names will be discussed. You're more than welcome to continue watching the meeting through the livestream link. And we really appreciate you bringing your voice to the table. Thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
You too.
Great. Thank you very much, Tori Delegation. So we have no presentations this evening. So that brings us up to items three and four, the consent agenda items for approval and for information, which include the Halton Board minutes from March 2nd, the special meeting minutes from March 18th, the order paper, the board report schedule, the quarterly capital update, the interim operating and capital finance report, and the administrative procedural update. So I, oh, yes, Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Oh, I might be jumping ahead here. I just would like to request that item 4.4, the interim operating and capital financial report, be pulled for additional discussion or, and/or information.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much. So trustee Reynolds, would you like to move a motion to deal with the consent agenda items?
I will do that. Thank you.
And trustee Gray, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I will.
Great. So I'll put the motion on the floor, and then we'll come to the pulling as Vice Chair Al Harrison so rapidly got there first. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda action and information items for March 23, 2022. So my next question is, are there any items that need to be pulled? We know that item two for the interim report, item four needs to be pulled. Are there any other items that anybody would like to pull? Trustee Garrett?
I'm sorry. I don't know if this is the appropriate time. Is this where we talk about the minutes from the special board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, there's an error on that.
Okay. What would that error be?
The error is that I was not in attendance. I am a regret.
Okay. So again, I think that might have been, we thought you might have been there by phones.
No worries. I'm just letting you know.
Okay, thank you. Trust, or manager Gortmaker?
I'm happy to note that change, and I was going to issue my apologies to trustee Garrett. It was my assumption she was on the phone, so that'll be corrected.
No worries. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other items? Great. So Superintendent Nagoy, I'm going to pass it over to you to speak to the interim operating and capital financial report.
Thank you. And for the chair, to all trustees, this report represents six months of the year, so we're halfway for the year in terms of an updated trustees on our operating and capital budget as it relates to the actual expenditures. I wanted to highlight a couple of things. Overall, if you look at the appendix A, which summarizes revenues and expenses, you'll note that we are approximately 40% of revenues received to date and 46% of expenses spent to date. So well within that expectation that we will be within the 50% range of the budget. So we are overall on track in terms of meeting our target for this time of the year, but I did want to highlight the COVID financial update in the report for trustees. for trustees, where we do note that the $1 million contingency that we have set aside for the year has currently been allocated to address various needs. Half of it has been addressed, has been focused on additional educational assistance to support our students with special needs, while the remainder was allocated for additional long-term occasionals to assist with schools and classroom coverage, as well as school administration coverage. In addition to that, we are looking at approximately $900,000 in internal savings in other areas of the budget to continue to cover for the long-term occasional teachers to the end of June. We, at this point, we know that some of the allocations will be in dual purpose. One will be to cover classroom support as well as a learning recovery. Learning recovery can be funded through the tutoring, the tutoring priorities and partnership fund that has been announced. So we have approximately 2.8 million to allocate to resources from April 1st to August 31st. So with that in mind, at this point in time, I believe we have sufficient funding to address our emerging needs for the system and still stay within budget. But I did want to, as a process, identify that should there be additional challenges that require funding beyond what we can allocate internally, we would come to trustees to request to potentially use additional surplus in order to address those needs. As a quick reminder, our revised budget is using approximately 11 million of the board funds. We were allowed to use 2% of our compliance, which is 2% of our provincial allocation, which would give us an additional $3 million or $3.5 million ability to use additional funding, should there be a need and should there be additional board approval. As I mentioned, at this point in time, we are on track. We have fully allocated our budget very efficiently and prioritized it within the system. So we do believe we are able to do it within the current budget. But I wanted to highlight those few things. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Nagoy. Does anybody have any questions? I just have one. So you say that we're hopeful that nothing, are there any worry beads as to things that might pop up that might take us off track?
Thank you, and for the chair, to the chair. At this point in time, we're not aware of anything that is additional. We do have, just looking at 184 resources within our additional resources within the system to assist schools and assist learning recovery. And we believe that with these additions and other resources that have been allocated, we are addressing our priorities. And we would be able to reallocate as necessary for the remainder of the year. So no, we don't have anything on our radar right now. Things do tend to change in this environment. Requirements, regulation tests to be updated and communicated and we tend to react. So I just wanted it to be on the board's radar that we are very closely monitoring our budget and our priorities in order to maximize our resources.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Wonderful. So we've had the discussion around some of the consent agenda items, but are there any objections to moving or approving the consent agenda as seen here? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. So that brings us up to item 5.0, ratification or action items for this evening. With 5.1, ratification of business transaction in private session. Vice Chair L Harrison, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we do. We have two items. The first one, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board meeting in private session, March 23rd, 2022, respecting legal matters, report 22039, and I so move.
Thank you so much. Trustee Amos, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Are there any, or is there any debate? Seeing none, if we can pop on over to our voting forums and cast our votes, please. Great, thank you so much. And that carries unanimously. Vice Chair L Harrison, there was a second item.
Yes, there was. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the resolution from the Halton District School Board meeting in private session, March 23rd, 2022, respecting property matters, report 22047, and I so move.
Thank you so much. Trustee Garretts, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
Great. Is there any debate? Seeing none, once again, if you can pop on over and cast your votes, please. And that carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now up to items 5.2 for action this evening and we have a busy night. We have eight items. First off, we have the shortlist of names for the new Milton Southwest Number 12 Public School, report number 22030. Manager Denton, good evening. Would you like to speak to this at all?
Good evening, Chair. Through you to all trustees and senior men and Director Ellis. And I have, again, I provided the report on March the 2nd board meeting, as you will recall, and we brought forward from the shortlisting committee five, five names for your consideration. And we had a bit of discussion about those five names at that meeting. The names that came forward were Dr. D H Aikenhead, J. Michael Ledwith, Milton Meadows, Milton Village, and Rattlesnake Point. And those names are provided to you for your consideration. I did have a request for the list of all names, which I shared with trustees this afternoon. And if you have any questions about any of that, before you proceed, I'm happy to answer them.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Do we have, actually, what I'll do is I'll read the motion first. So be it resolved that the Halton District School Board actually, ah, no, I won't. I'm going to check those questions first because we can't fill in the blank just yet. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I'm just wondering if you would comment, please, on any input that you've had since two weeks ago, when this report would have first been circulated. Thank you.
For me to comment or Manager Denton?
That would be for Manager Denton. Thank you.
Sorry.
Of course. As far as input, I have personally not received any input or feedback about the names that went, that came forward as, as far as I know. And they, I believe there was some notification circulated on social media. But I'm not, I didn't see any of that information. I don't follow those groups. So I think they were community groups.
Did you have a follow-up, trustee Gray? Are you?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I'll probably come back on the list. Thank you.
Okay, honest. They are awesome. Thank you. Trustee Rocha.
Yeah, through the chair, question is directed at trustee Garretts. Wondering, as the trustee for the future school, what feedback has she received from her community?
Through you, Chair, to trustee Rocha and the other trustees. That's actually why I had my hand up. I have had extensive feedback, as late as like an hour ago. The community appears to be very split between Dr. Aikenhead and Mike Ledwith. The community has no appetite whatsoever, essentially, for Milton Meadows, Rattlesnake Point, or Milton Village. One of the issues with the Milton Village name is that coming, maybe, school number 15 will probably be built right beside or in the Milton Education Village. So, you know, maybe people are holding off on that one. But it's really, I've heard from a lot of people, like, tons. And I've spoken to folks out in the community and I know there's actually community members watching tonight, which Milton people don't normally do that. We may even have a town councillor right now watching. So, yeah, it's, it's split 50/50. And I gotta be honest, I'm having a hard time myself. And it would be between those two. They're excellent, fine men that have done so much for our community that either one would be great on the front of our school. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Garretts. Trustee Rocha, does that help? Perfect. Trustee Reynolds.
Hello, everybody, and everybody who's watching. I have actually a question. So thank you. I was really interested to hear what sort of feedback you've been getting from the community, trustee Garretts, but there's one, I'm wondering if there's been any thought or whether we've had any experience in naming a school to honor the land. And I'm struck by the notion that Milton, as it continues to build out and land is needed to, you know, fulfill creating housing and of course, building schools, supporting the growing population, whether there's a pressure that would be encroaching on what is a Rattlesnake Point is a biosphere that is a very important eco-tourism spot. So I was wondering, I was struck with the notion that this is, you know, an incredible, important geographic, natural opportunity for naming a school community. But I wondered whether we have actually named any schools in support of the environment, considering we've had a student-led climate emergency declaration, encouraging community to take collective action on climate change. We certainly have our multi-year plan as a priority in environmental leadership. And on a global level, it's certainly an opportunity to make good on our commitment honoring the earth and meeting the UN Sustainable Goals. So my question is, have we ever named a school to honor that legacy?
Um, so trustee Reynolds, I don't know if that's a question for...
I, I'm not going to direct it to someone in particular, but I would love it if somebody, the director or somebody on the committee or somebody who has history who could answer that.
Manager Denton has her hand waving. So there you go. Manager Denton.
Thank you, Chair. Just in response to your question, trustee Reynolds, there are a number of schools that we have named for geographic features. And in Milton as well, Bruce Trail, of course, as Scarpment View, being two of them. We also have geographical features like Joshua Creek and Lake Shore, you know, some of those kinds of features. But specifically, no, we have not in, in, in terms of how you described, named any schools.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through your chair. Thank you, trustee Reynolds, for your question. That, that is an interesting question to pose. In reviewing the list of the names that were suggested for this school, I noticed that there was a large proportion that referred to our rich indigenous history, including some geographical or biosphere areas of particular significance, like Crawford Lake. Now, I know that the committee that met was formed and acted in accordance with our school naming policy. But I see that the, the meeting, there was only one meeting and there was only one school community rep on that committee, who was a parent of a child who will be attending that school. And so I'm just, you know, I'm thinking that, I'm just wondering if there's other opportunities and if we need to think about reaching out to our prospective students and gaining their insights, engaging our student body in reflecting on how they would like to see their schools named. And I do have a question for trustee Garretts, and that's for a point of clarification. When you say that you've heard from a large number of constituents, are you able to say whether they are Milton residents or more specifically, students who will be attending the school?
I have heard from some students. Mostly, they are just Milton residents and I can tell you that they are from all walks of life and all corners.
Frozen.
So, so there's that weather we were talking about earlier. I know it's pretty bad down here.
As a point of order, I can finish that for you if you like.
Thanks, trustee Daniele.
I can tell you that trustee Garrett put it out on Facebook and those, I've never seen such a response as we got on that particular Facebook post of the number of people expressing their opinions. And there were pros and cons for every one of the five names. But as trustee Garrett says, overwhelmingly, the support was between the two Milton icons, Dr. Aikenhead and Mike Ledwith.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the chair. I just wanted to say that I had a chance to review the names today and I wanted to, to make sure that it was part of public record that the, the process involved with the, those participating in the Milton school naming process, of which there were, I think, 1,200 some odd names produced. Not all of them individual, there were many duplicates, but that those names honored, it was quite a variety. Some honored indigenous history or historical events. Some included individuals who are seen as change makers, activists, prophets, scientists, politicians, humanitarians, veterans, artists, sports heroes, to name a few. Some focused on endearing qualities or what I call the feel-good names. For example, Hope Elementary School. And others featured certain trees or flowers or geographical areas as being seen as desirable names. So there was overall, I'm not sure if all trustees had the chance to review that list of names. Overall, there was a great variety. One of the things that I focused on in my research and getting ready for this decision tonight, because this is such a very important decision, was looking at the process and honoring the fact that we have to follow the process that's in place. But I... But I wondered how or if we actually were hearing well from student voice, and something as trustee Oliver has just mentioned. So I've reached out tonight to both of our student trustees and have learned that they had not heard anything from the community in their role as student trustee. And one of our trustees, I believe, is from the Milton community, so neither have heard anything from the community. And I I guess I would look at just our way of reaching out. I would have hoped there would have been more response, save for the very rich response that trustee Garrett's got through a Facebook posting, which would again be very limited to a very, you know, certain group of people that are on Facebook. Not everybody's on Facebook, certain group of people that may be following trustee Garrett's. So I I I recognize, I do not not validate their position and their contributions to this decision, but I just recognize that that once the five names were decided, that though people could have written to the board or even delegated, as we had one delegation tonight, and I'm thankful for that, that there wasn't more input to help us with this this direction that we face as a group of trustees tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Gray, and I also want to mention, we did have one delegation two weeks ago as well, so we've had two delegations to the board. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much, and yes, I will admit that that is a limit on Facebook. I would mention that the post received 98 comments and was shared by eight people, and then those people had it shared out, so there were innumerable shares in there. But one of the comments, and this is something that I am considering that we did hear, is that there's a Milton Meadows development planned for Milton Heights, which is an area of Milton which is nowhere near the school, and the possibility of confusion to some of a Milton Meadows development and a Milton Meadows school that are nowhere near each other. So that is one of the things that I know that I'm taking into consideration as well, that anybody outside of Milton might not be aware of.
Thank you, trustee Daniele. Are there any other questions or debate before we move into the selection process?
Has trustee Garrett been able to rejoin us? I know she got knocked out by the weather.
So let's see. I don't see her here. I don't know if she's able to join by phone.
Okay, point of personal privilege, can we take a five-minute recess while we try to get trustee Garrett's on the line, given that this will be her school?
That sounds like a perfect plan, so why don't we take five minutes? It'll give us five minutes to think and look as well. I will, while we're in that five-minute recess, I'm going to put the five names up on the screen so everybody can see them. Vice Chair Al Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. There's been a lot of questions, it feels like, and I just want to confirm that according to the board procedure, the school naming and renaming governance procedure, do we or do we not have the potential to defer to another meeting if that's the will of the trustees? I'm not making that motion or suggestion necessarily, because in my read of that particular procedure, it doesn't give that tool necessarily, which is unfortunate, because it seems like sometimes it would be good. Now, the purview of the board, I believe, is always to defer a motion that's in front of us. But anyway, that's my question. Thank you.
Oh, trustee Collard, you might have our answer.
Our board bylaws supersede the policy. We are always allowed to defer a motion.
And I seem to recall speaking to manager Gortmaker that this has happened once before. Manager Gortmaker?
That is correct.
So yes, that is that is another option if we are comfortable moving forward today. If somebody would like to put a motion on the floor to defer this decision till the next board meeting. Vice Chair Al Harrison, you got your hand up again.
Yes, thank you, and that was, I I just wanted people to, through Madam Chair, to understand fully what the tools are in front of them tonight before embarking on this particular decision. But I would suggest that if we put a motion on the floor, that something has to change between now and then, whether it be the information that comes forward through student voice, as has been suggested by two of my colleagues, or some other bit of information. Because I think it would be unhelpful just to defer and not have anything different the next time we come back to it. So I leave it to my colleagues on that note. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Collard.
I would prefer to defer if trustee Garrett's cannot be present for the vote. It seems to me that it would not be fair to vote if she's not present. So I would say at the end of the recess, which I, we're we're in a recess right now, because you called one. At the end of the recess, if she's still not here, we should defer. It would not be fair.
Okay, trustee Oliver.
Sorry, yes, through you Chair, I would be happy to defer. I think it's important to get more student voice. And, you know, two very stellar individuals have been put forward for the name for the school. Looking at the list, I see there are lots of other suggestions and sentiments shared, including sentiments that express, you know, why are we naming after people? So that, along with the fact that I don't feel we've had enough student input into this, I would like to suggest that we defer. And I think trustee Reynolds and I would be happy to support the student trustees, with young Clara and Bao in in reaching out.
Okay, thank you, trustee Vidilakara.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo trustee Oliver's comments. Both trustee Bao and I are from Milton, although I don't go to school in Milton, and we really have not heard much from students about the school naming. And so for the next board meeting, we would like to have this motion deferred so that we have the opportunity to try to engage with students again on this on this topic and offer some more student voice.
Okay, okay, trustee Daniele. So I'm just conscious that trustee Collard said we are already supposedly in a recess, but I don't know that I called the time, so trustee Daniele.
Thank you, and I noticed that trustee Garrett has been able to join us. And and I appreciate the student voice. I'm wondering what's different about this, but we've named schools before, and then this has never come up. And I'm going to be honest with you, the people of Milton, there's quite a bit of anxiety around this, and they've been waiting quite a bit of time to see the school name. And so I would be hesitant to request that they that they wait any longer. I do respect student voice. I think student voice is an important part of what we're doing. But I'm not understanding why when we were naming a school in Oakville, it wasn't a concern. But it is a concern now. I think maybe going forward, we change our process to be able to get more student voice, and we look at ways in which to be able to do that. But my my concern right now is that the people of Milton have been waiting quite some time for this, and I think it would be a disrespect to them to to go yet another meeting with deciding. So if a defer was called, I wouldn't be supporting it.
Trustee Rocha. So I'm just conscious, can I just check with everybody? We seem to be, are we canceling the recess we were taking? Are we waiting for a little bit longer? Because right now trustee Collard said that we've started a recess, and we haven't really started a recess. So I'm just really wondering, do we want to take a little break to collect our thoughts and come back? Keep on going. All right, trustee Rocha. And direct, oh, sorry, trustee Rocha, Director Ennis, did you have something you wanted to say?
I I leave this to the purview of the trustees, but a process has led us to this point with the short listing of the names. And as such, I I think that it's not a simple matter of just, you know, bringing it back to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Rocha.
Director Ennis and trustee Daniele captured my thoughts exactly. We 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 had a process in place last year. We tweaked it, we all approved it, and now we, what I'm hearing is that we don't like the process that we came up with. So I think to honor our our process and our policy, we should not be deferring. And if we need to review the process, then I think a motion needs to be struck to review the process on a go-forward basis. But for tonight, we need to to honor our policies or processes and the the people of Milton.
Okay, thank you, trustee Rocha. Trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. While I really appreciated getting the names that were nominated for the, the committee has selected the top five, and we as trustees cannot pick the other names from that list. That's not the way the process works. We have to take the top five that the committee picked, and that is where we decide from. So I'm just concerned that there may be some thought that could change some of the names, and that's not part of the process. So I just wanted to make sure that my fellow trustees knew that we have to follow the process we have, and the five names that are there are the ones that we need to pick from.
Thank you, trustee Amos. Okay, so seeing no more further hand, I just want to come back to trustee Oliver. As you had mentioned about a motion, I'm just wondering if we want to go forward with the process, or if you're wanting to put a motion on the floor.
Well, what I'm hearing is that there is no willingness to defer. And I and I do appreciate, we do have a policy and the process was followed as outlined. So I I guess we have to proceed tonight. I would like to move a motion, though, to or recommend or move a motion to that we relook at our policy again. I think, you know, as the subcommittee had spent quite a bit of time looking at various aspects of our school naming and renaming policy. But I don't think we've considered everything, and I think there are lessons learned, and I think there's better ways of going forward and getting more inclusive community engagement into the process. And so that's what I would recommend, is that we we that the subcommittee go back and have another look and see what kind of improvements can be made and propose that to to the trustees.
All right, thank you so much. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I totally concur with trustee Oliver, and I recognize trustee Amos's comments in that a process is in place, we followed the process, we've got to this point, a decision must be made. I always worry, however, my point today, after doing all the research that I did, was I felt that I I needed a little bit more information to help me with that decision, more information in terms of student input. And I and I and I guess our process, as it exists right now, which I recognize we have to follow, it does not permit that to happen, and that's unfortunate, but that's the process that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Garrett, welcome back.
Thank you so much, through you Chair. Sorry, I missed part of that. The weather up here is really bad. We're talking about process, and I hope manager Denton's still on. I believe that students did have the opportunity to put names forward. And and correct me if I'm wrong, it was blasted out all over the place, so.
Manager Denton?
Yes, Chair, through you, to all trustees. Indeed, there was a campaign, of course, and we did have over 1,000 names submitted. Three hundred, about 350 of those were unique names. But we do posters in all the Milton schools, and we do social media ads, and we do news releases, and and we share it with principals to share with their school communities. So we do, we do try and garner student input as well as all community input. Quite frankly, we have a very open and transparent process for gathering names. Regarding trustee Oliver's question about the parent input, there was only one parent on the committee because there was, there's only one school from which the students are coming, and that's Angie MacArthur. So there was only one parent, and that's what the procedure requires.
All right, thank you very much. So I'm just calling everyone's attention to the time. It's eight o'clock. Trustee Gray, you have your hand up?
Yeah, just very quickly, I may have misspoke, and I just want to clarify. Yes, indeed, there were opportunities for students to give input. I totally agree with that. I mean, I spoke to all the names that came in, and the over 1,000. What I wanted to say, though, is once we shortlisted to the five, I would have liked to have seen some, you know, some return to students for student voice. That that was my point, but totally understand, and I totally want to, again, support if trustee Oliver's putting a motion forward that the committee have another look at the policy as it exists. I had lots of learning from this round, and I know in speaking to Superintendent Newton, there's more rounds to come. So I think it's an opportunity for us to tweak it and tighten it up. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So we'll look at that motion, maybe at committee of the whole or during trustee questions and comments, but if that's what you're looking at moving forward tonight, let's make it tight. Okay, so we're going to move on to the process if there are no more questions on the floor. So the director, in usual times, distributes ballots on which trustees can record their own name, and the one school name, which I'm going to put up on the screen for everybody to see. It's not letting me share. Always allow. Okay, let's see if we're working, we're trying it one more time. But what we would like you all to do is in an email that you will address to both associate director Bo and director Ennis to put, well, it's not letting me share. I don't know why. So the five names, I'll read them out, Dr. D. H. Aikenhead, J. Michael Ledwith, Milton Meadows, Milton Village, and Rattlesnake Point. So those are the five names you have to choose from. So in an email addressed to both to both director Miller and associate director Ennis, if you could please choose your name of choice and send that email through, and once all 13 emails have been received, we will hear the results. Yes?
The process says you need to ask each trustee who their support is for, and so that all, see which names get nominated before we vote, because not all names may be nominated. You are supposed to ask each trustee if they would like to nominate a name as part of the process.
Okay, so I'm I'm reading from a process, and I don't see that piece. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much. We could also, you know, I'm sure that trustee Garrett and I would be happy to put forward the names of Dr. Aikenhead and Michael Ledwith to have them on the floor. But my other question would be if, once the, remind me, the process, please, the clarification, once director Ennis and associate director Bo receive the votes, I believe in the past they have read each vote out, so it is a public vote as to how each trustee voted. So, and if trustee Amos is correct, then I will pick one, I will put, I will nominate Michael J. Ledwith's school.
Okay, so yes, so in answer to your question, trustee Daniele, yes, once the director has collected the ballots, they read aloud they read aloud each ballot, including the name of the trustee and the school name selected. So trustee Amos, I'm sorry, you are correct, we'll go around and check for nominations of the five school names, I'm sorry. All right, so trustee Daniele, you are nominating.
Michael J. Ledwith, and I would ask that you would then go to trustee Garrett's rather than around the horn, given that it is, will be her school.
Of course.
And hopefully Heather's okay with my making that nomination.
Sorry, trustee Garrett's.
Thank you, I will nominate, um, Dr. D. Aikenhead.
Thank you. Um, trustee Oliver.
I will nominate Rattlesnake Point.
Trustee Amos.
I'll nominate, um, Dr. D. A. Aikenhead.
Um, trustee Grabance.
I'll almost nominate Rattlesnake Point.
Trustee Collard.
I nominate Rattlesnake Point.
Trustee Gray.
I would nominate Rattlesnake Point, thank you very much.
Um, trustee Oliver.
Already did?
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm just, trustee Reynolds, there we are.
Uh, thank you, I will nominate Rattlesnake Point.
Trustee Rocha.
I'll nominate J. Michael Ledwith.
Thank you. Vice chair Al Harrison?
Yes, uh, thank you, and I think I have a point of order too. I, the names that I'm still considering have all been nominated, uh, so I don't have another one to put forward at this time.
Yeah, okay, um. Trustee Vidalankara?
Uh, I nominate J. Michael Ledwith.
And trustee Bow.
Uh, I also nominate J. Michael Ledwith.
All right, so I, I think I have everybody. Were there any other names, uh, that were wanting to come to the floor? That anybody have, not have a chance to nominate? Okay, so seeing none, we're now going to go to the next step where you will now need to email both director Ennis and associate director Bo. Your name of choice, and you are choosing from three. Dr. D. H. Aikenhead, J. Michael Ledwith, or Rattlesnake Point. So those are the three choices that are on the floor. So if you can please, your name of choice emailed to both the director and associate director. And we will await for them to get the thirteen votes. Director Ennis and associate director Bo, if you just want to let us know when you're ready to announce.
Thank you, Chair Shuttlesworth, uh, we're still, uh, tabulating. Chair Shuttlesworth, uh, we do have, uh, the results and they're in, and we do have a majority.
Great, so, uh, director Ennis, will you please read out the votes casted and the names the trustees associate with each vote, please?
Thank you, uh, good evening trustees and everyone. Uh, the results of the naming for the school, we have the first, um, for Rattle- Rattlesnake Point. We have trustee Gray, trustee Grabance, trustee Reynolds, trustee Collard, trustee Oliver, trustee Bow, and trustee Vidalankara. For the other, uh, name, one second, just wanna confirm this. Sorry. For D. H. Aikenhead, we have trustee Shuttlesworth, uh, trustee, uh, Al Harrison, and trustee Amos. And then, for trustee, for J. Michael Ledwith, we have trustee Daniele, trustee Garrett's, and trustee Rocha. That is thirteen votes.
Thank you so much, uh, director Ennis. Uh, trustee Collard?
Uh, we require six votes from the adult trustees for one to achieve a majority. We have five, three, and three. The two student trustee votes, um, are not allowed to be counted. So we still haven't, um, got a clear winner.
Okay, so director Ennis, can you tell me again, so the Michael J. Ledwith and Dr. Aikenhead, what were the numbers for both of those? Three and three?
Yes, you read my mind.
So, all right, so, cause usually you pick the top two, um.
Point of order?
Uh, yes.
Uh, if, I sent you a, a, an email, uh, regarding the procedure. Um, and I believe it, uh, talks about, uh, what happens when there's ties.
Okay, so should not the name of the student report it, the door, the school name with the least number of votes shall be eliminated. However, we have no least number of votes, because we have, uh, nomination with five and two with three, yes.
Point of order, if you read further, you'll find that if there's a tie for the least votes, you have to draw one from the hat.
Okay, that's how we gotta go, so. Uh, director Ennis?
Yes.
Would you like to put those two names, so Dr. D. H. Aikenhead and J. Michael Ledwith into? A hat? Uh, vice chair Al Harrison, thank you.
Yep, no problem, you're doing great. I just want to be clear that as per the policy, that what happens with the one that gets drawn?
So. Two names shall be placed in blocks, director shall, shall draw one name, which shall be the name eliminated from the shortlist. So whichever name you pull out, director Ennis, will be gone. So whichever one remains in the box will be the one that stays.
Um, just, uh, give me one moment in procedural fairness, I just need to get a bag to put them in. Okay, so I have both names here in the bag, and I'm going to choose one. And the name that was drawn is J. Michael Ledwith.
Thank you. So trustees, we now need to go back to send another email to both director Ennis and associate director Bo with your name of choice between Rattlesnake Point and Dr. D. H. Aikenhead. All right, so if everybody could cast their votes, please.
Chair Shuttlesworth, we do have the results of the second vote.
Wonderful, thank you. Will you please read those results? Thank you.
The results for the second vote for the name of the school. We have for Rattlesnake Point, uh, trustee Grabance. Uh, we have, uh, trustee Rocha, trustee Collard, trustee Reynolds, um, trustee Oliver, trustee Amos, trustee Gray. And we also have trustee Vidalankara and trustee Bow for Rattlesnake Point. For D. H. Aikenhead, we have trustee, you know, vice chair Al Harrison, chair Shuttlesworth, uh, trustee Daniele, and trustee Garrett's.
Thank you very much. So, we have a decision, so I will now read the motion. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board named the new elementary school, Milton Public School Number Eleven, located at thirteen eighty-five Kovachik Boulevard in Milton. located at 1385 Kovachik Boulevard in Milton, Rattlesnake Point. Trustee Garretts, would you like to move this?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
And trustee Daniele, would you like to second that?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you very much. Will everybody please cast their votes?
I'm going to have to say, I'm going to have to agree. I don't have my voting thing up, sorry.
Great, thank you. I think we're missing one.
Point of order, Casey, she has voted, but in the comments, but she can't get her wifi working, but she votes yes.
Okay, thank you. I think we're still missing. Am I counting wrong, Vice Chair Harrison?
With trustee Garretts and trustee Bowe, that makes thirteen, so.
Perfect, so awesome. Thank you so much. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And congratulations to our new school. Okay, um, I think we're gonna keep plugging along for a little bit, so we're gonna be up, we're up to five point two point two. Trustee Distribution and Determination, report number 22028, Superintendent Nagoy, Executive Officer Gaudette and Director Ennis. I'll read the motion and then we'll see if we have any discussion surrounding it. Okay? Be resolved that the Halton District School Board designate no areas within its jurisdiction as low population areas for the purpose of trustee determination and distribution. And that the Halton District School Board approve the trustee determination appendix A and the trustee distribution appendix B templates as appended to report 22028. And that the Halton District School Board approve the determination of electoral potions by ward as followed as described in report number 22028. Status quo for Burlington, status quo for Oakville, status quo for Milton, status quo for Halton Hills, and that the town of Oakville will be designated as the lead municipality. Trustee Oliver, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, I will move the motion.
Thank you so much. And trustee Amos, would you like to second that?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Are there some staff who would like to speak to this? I heard somebody's hand go up, but I don't see it on my list.
For you, Chair Shuttleworth, to all trustees. Trustees have seen this report at the prior meeting as well as at the Committee of the Whole in terms of some of the discussion in determining whether or not a change is necessary. And the recommendation is that status quo is appropriate and within regulation. We are noting in red a couple of amendments from the last report for ease of finding those through the report and would be happy to take any other questions trustees may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Are there any questions? This has come to us before. Trustee Gravance?
I just wanted to say thank you very much for the in-depth discussions that we did have at Committee of the Whole. I did have questions that were answered there. I just want the community to know that we actually did have quite a discussion on this. And I'm in full support of keeping the status quo, both for regulation and for the, the, from the perspective of the, of our constituents, being able to fully understand and easily understand who their trustee is with regard to the school that their children are attending. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions? Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am in support of the motion. I agree with the number of trustees allocated to the Halton municipality. I am support of maintaining the status quo of the ward representation, but I do want to leave a comment for the record, please. I am uncomfortable making this decision with a mere five weeks for the election period to be engaged in the municipality, knowing full well that there's a significant variance in voter parity between the wards, particularly in Burlington. And I worry that with growth and building, we've experienced as well as what's coming down the line will continue to impact a disparity. But I'm very grateful to staff for making a note in the report, documenting the strategy going forward and in advance of the next municipal election. Thank you to staff for your commitment to monitoring closer to account for the increasing disparity between the wards and, and your commitment to connect with the municipality to make sure that, you know, that well in advance of this period, we can adjust and balance population distributions. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you. General Manager Tivo?
Sorry, just through you, Chair Shuttleworth and just the trustees, there were, there were a couple of questions that came up last, or not last week, two weeks ago at the Committee of the Whole meeting regarding direction of school support. That, that did come up and we did commit to come back later on, so I just wanted to see if the question come up tonight. So a couple of things with that, since that time, we did have a quick review to see how we're looking like in terms of apportionment overall. And what we did is we took a quick little look as to what the PEG report was for our co-determinative support, again, the Population Electoral Group report, as well as our own, looked at the total and see what our total share was and then compared that to a recent ministry memorandum that was circulated to boards that spoke to the ratio of students by board. And what I can say is that, you know, relatively speaking, we are equally distributed between comparing enrollment to our Population Electoral Group. In fact, I think our PEG report is a little bit higher up in terms of that distribution. So that means that we're probably capturing our student body as well as others on top of that. Moreover, there were discussions around how we can approach this subject matter with our families that may not be as aware of this and what we discovered through discussing with, you know, other departments and reviewing what we have right now. I'm happy to report that we actually already have as part of our registration form, a section that's right up top that speaks to your direction of school support, whether it's being directed to the public board. And then there's appropriate links that provide you access to the impact website if you wish to, to change that. And just to add to that as well, we're also gonna just, fire services as well as the senior team's gonna be working with communications in terms of updating E-Register My Child, just to make it also clear on there as part of that process that they know where to access the information if they so desire to look at it. So I just wanted to let you know that we, we had looked at that and just wanted to report back on those findings since Committee of the Whole.
Great, thank you so much. And behalf of all the trustees at the board, I really do, we all do really appreciate the work you put into getting us those answers to some of those questions that sometimes might not necessarily be so easy to find. So we do really appreciate that, so thank you so much. Okay, so the motion's on the floor, it's been moved and seconded. Any further questions before we move over to vote? Wonderful, so thank you so much. If you can pop on over and cast your votes, please.
Trustee Garretts votes yes.
Thank you, trustee Garretts. And that carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, we are now up to item 5.2.3 Heritage and History Months. So again, I'm going to read the motion and then allow staff to speak to it. So be resolved that the Halton District School Board adopt and recognize the Heritage and History Months as formally identified and recognized by the province of Ontario. Namely Hispanic Heritage Month, Islamic Heritage Month, Albanian Heritage Month, Hindu Heritage Month, Tamil Heritage Month, Black History Heritage Month, Bangladeshi Heritage Month, Sikh Heritage Month, Asian Heritage Month, Dutch Heritage Month, Jewish Heritage Month, South Asian Heritage Month, Italian Heritage Month and Portuguese, Portuguese History and Heritage Month. Trustee Reynolds, would you like to move this?
Yes, I'd be honored, thanks.
And trustee Garretts, would you like to second this?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
Great. Are there any, Director Ennis, is there any staff that might like to speak to this motion, please?
I can think of no one better than Superintendent Etta.
Thanks very much, Director Ennis. Through the chair to the board of trustees, I am pleased to present the Heritage and History Months report for your consideration. The HDSB is proud to recognize important days and months of significance throughout, throughout the school year. Educational research has consistently shown that student achievement is connected to student wellbeing and an increased sense of belonging, both in the classrooms and school communities. Integral to this is student identity. As outlined in the accompanying report, the recommendation before the board is to formally adopt Heritage and History Months to ensure that we, as a system, commemorate the contributions of communities who identities and lived experiences are often underrepresented in the education sector. While we officially acknowledge heritage and hits is important, we know the power of this act is in how it can be leveraged to create greater inclusive learning environments throughout the year, ones where our students feel affirmed and that they belong. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have at this time.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I see trustee Gray on our speakers list.
Thank you very much, through the director. I, I'm sorry, we've just had a power surge here, so I just lost the report that was on my second screen here. So I just wanted to ask, are we in a position to be nimble? For example, should a additional Heritage Month be recognized by the province of Ontario? Are we nimble enough to immediately add that into our group of that that we recognize? I just, I worry that if somehow there are additional groups added that we would miss them. And I'm wondering how nimble we are to quickly add them and, and move the forward.
Yeah, through, through the chair to trustee Gray, absolutely. We, as you can see in the report, that we've identified a particular month, namely those that have been acknowledged in the province of Ontario. If you go to other websites, you will see other, other months, other days. We, we very much wanted to focus on, on those of, that have been, been identified through legislation. And so if there are additional ones that are identified through legislation in the province of Ontario, absolutely, we can very much add those to the list. We feel this is a fairly comprehensive list to get started and, and ones that, to be honest, really acknowledge a groups that, to be quite honest, in, in most of our classrooms, within our curriculum, within the resources in our library, you'd be hard pressed to find a lot of information on, on some of these groups. And we're working hard as a system, both, both internally as well as with our partners in order to fill some of those gaps. But yes, if, if additional groups are acknowledged and recognized, then we, we have the ability to absolutely be very nimble and respond accordingly.
Thank you. And just a follow-up, please. Is, is the work at identifying these different groups that we might want to see in that informed by the student census? In other words, the students that we serve in Halton region. Would there be any groups that we're not identifying in this, these honoring through the months that are prominently in our region right now?
Yeah, I've, I feel, I feel very confident that, that these, these groups are very much ones that we see within our populations that are acknowledged in the student census and very much foremost in our minds. Well, well ahead of bringing this recommendation to the board, we acknowledge the, the, the changing context of, of Halton and the need to be more proactive and to provide resources and direction to the system. So actually this past summer, we, we had various different writing teams that, that were led by staff and teachers in the system, educators of various different identities representing these groups to help identify resources that can be used and can be promoted in order to fill some of those gaps and to provide important direction to, to the system, both, both now and, and moving forward. So I, I, I hope that helps answer the question.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair L Harrison?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I am in support of this action. And I appreciate that we will certainly consider adding to it as different months are recognized by the province. I think my question here is that there are other recognitions at the federal level, for example. I'm thinking of June being National Indigenous History Month, for example. And there's also Friday, September 30th, which is the new National Day for Truth and Reconciliation in Canada. So both of those are respecting indigenous culture, heritage. So I just wonder where that, where consideration of national and/or ones that are very important reflected in our multi-year plan, yet not recognized in Ontario, how we can bring those in? And I regret that I didn't think of this when we talked at Committee of the Whole. So I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, no worries at all. Through the chair to, to Vice Chair L Harrison. The, I, I think there's a kind of a primary reason why, why those two, two big particular, the day number one, as well as, as well as the month is, is, is not included, is, is that we've been in, in working with our indigenous partners, we're, we're always reminded of ensuring that we are keeping those areas very much distinct. And so that they should not be enveloped into broader, you know, equity considerations. And, and therefore they should be kept separate and distinct. So we, we have this, this list as in, certainly isn't meant to be an all encompassing list. It isn't meant to replace or yeah, it is meant to replace all of those other significant days, days of particular significance that we have identified through other resources and documents. So we've been working with our communications department actually to update the board website over the March break. And in the updated version, you'll be able to see on the menu on the left-hand side that there are particular days of, of significance. There will be these Heritage and History Months. So there's a variety of different resources and none of them are meant to be all inclusive or encompassing. This is meant to simply fill a void, but isn't meant to be addressing any and all days of significance. And certainly those that are very much critically important to us with, with respect to honoring indigenous. critically important to us with respect to honoring Indigenous realities in Indigenous peoples in the province, in the country, and certainly in the area. Our attempt is to try and keep that separate and distinct as per the wishes of our treaty partners.
Vice Chair Harrison, do you have a follow-up?
You're muted. I put my hand down. Wrong button. Thank you. And I am very supportive, given the special relationship, nation-to-nation relationship with Canada that First Nations have and Indigenous peoples. And so I was trying to word my question carefully, I guess. I wonder, then, in that regard, whether there is some other thing that we need to do as a board, whether such a parallel motion, yet different, would be assistive in honoring those other matters that we've just talked about with respect to Indigenous perspectives and realities and so on. It doesn't have to be answered now, and maybe by seeking input from those people that are providing those voices and direction and guidance to us. But I guess I asked the question in the first place is just because I do want to be honoring as much and as best as possible through our processes Indigenous peoples.
Yeah, through the chair to Vice Chair Al Harrison. We can absolutely take that away. We have, of course, our Indigenous Education Advisory Committee that meets on a regular basis. And I'd be happy to bring this back to them. They are certainly appreciative of everything that our board has done in order to acknowledge both through our multi-year plan as well as through separate commitments related to the TRC. That they're very appreciative of the ongoing work as well as how we have promoted things such as September 30th, as well as National Indigenous Month and National Indigenous Day on June 21st. So we do have additional ways that we go around communicating that to the system and working with the system in order to promote those particular days. But if there's more that we can do, I will absolutely bring that back to our next meeting and we'll keep the board informed as per anything that comes out of those discussions.
Great. Thank you so much. Seeing no more questions. Again, Superintendent Etoff, on behalf of the board, thank you so much for all the work you've done in putting this together for us. We all really appreciate it. So with that, if everybody would like to take a look at their voting page and cast their votes, please. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And that carries unanimously. Okay, we are now up to 5.2.4 Trustee Promotion and Onboarding Subcommittee Report 22042. Again, I'll read the motion and then we'll put it up for discussion after. So be it resolved that the staff add the document content to the trustee area of the website to inform the community and potential candidates of the role of the trustee. Trustee Gobens, would you like to move this motion?
Yes, thank you.
And trustee Gray, would you like to second that?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Wonderful. Would anybody like to speak to this, trustee Gobens?
Sure, I'll speak to it. Thank you very much. I want to thank my subcommittee colleagues, trustee Daniele, trustee Gray, and trustee Amos for coming together to put these documents together. It's vitally important that our community understand what our role is so that they know when they need to contact us and when they need to not, you know, contact staff instead because it's of operational issues. And also for people who are interested in perhaps running for the role to really understand what the role is about, what their responsibilities are. And so there's a short FAQ available, frequently asked questions, as well as a much larger and more detailed document. And so we're hoping that staff will add this to the website so that people can easily find this. And on top of this, by fulfilling this particular, by posting this information, it actually speaks to one of the goals that is in the next item on our agenda for the board self-assessment, to get that information available out to our communities. So I hope that, I hope my colleagues will approve this tonight.
Great. Thank you so much. And thank you to you and your team as far as getting this all rolling. We really appreciate that. Does any, do any of the trustees have any questions for this subcommittee? Wonderful. Seeing none, if we can all go over to our voting sheets and cast your vote on this motion, please. Missing one.
Trustee Bow.
Trustee Bow. She was having difficulty. Trustee Oliver, trustee Reynolds, are you in touch with trustee Bow? Or trustee Vidilankara? Oh, yes, there we go. Wonderful. Thank you so much. And that carries unanimously. Thank you so much. We're going to keep going through. Now we're on to 5.2.5 Board Self-Assessment Terms of Reference Report 220423. I'll read the motion again. Be it resolved that the Board Self-Assessment Standing Committee Terms of Reference be approved and appended to the committee's governance procedure. Be it resolved that the Board Self-Assessment Goals for 2022 be approved and implemented prior to the end of the 2018 to 2022 term. Trustee Daniele, would you like to move this?
Thank you. Yes, I would.
And trustee Gobens, would you like to second this?
Absolutely.
And wonderful. Would anyone like to speak to this? Vice Chair Harrison.
Sure, I can speak to this. Thank you very much. So at the previous committee of the whole meeting, we had a very good session to develop our goals, governance-related for the next number of months. Those are appended. And then as a subcommittee, we also brought forward a committee terms of reference, which is new. This is an area that is being formalized, given the importance of self-assessment and continuous improvement in our governance. So it's great that we have come this far and that we are now building in these processes for ourselves to reflect, learn, and evolve every year. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. And I know you did some great training at our last committee of the whole, which was wonderful. So again, thank you, everyone on the team, for such hard work. Does anybody have any questions for this motion? Wonderful. Seeing none, if we can pop on over to our voting forum and submit our votes, please. And that carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right, we are now up to 5.2.6, which was 5.2.7, which is the election of Chair, Vice Chair Governance Procedure, Report Number 22045 by trustee Collard and trustee Rocha. Again, I'll read the motion. Be it resolved that the Governance Standing Committee created trustee operational policy and election of Chair and Vice Chair Governance Procedure with a report returning to the board for information on April 6, 2022, for a subsequent decision on April 20, 2022. These documents are to be discussed at the Committee of the Whole on April 13, 2022. The trustee operations policy is to be sent for legal review on April 14, 2022. So any changes to the policy can be made prior to the meeting on April 20, 2022. Trustee Collard, would you like to move this?
Yes, I would. Thank you very much.
And trustee Rocha, would you like to second this?
I would.
Would either of you like to speak to this?
We noted as a committee that there are areas of trustee responsibility that have guidelines that have been shaped over time, but are not codified as governance procedures. And we also noted when we were doing our bylaw review, which will be coming to the board soon, that there are still some procedural elements lying within the bylaws. And one of those was the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. We felt that that was the easiest one for us to start putting into a governance procedure because it exists in its entirety, and there is very little in the way of modification that was noted during the bylaw review. So we believe this is probably the easiest place for us to start in terms of making sure that we have governance procedures in place for all trustee operational items. And so that's what we've done.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for trustee Collard or trustee Rocha regarding this motion? Wonderful. Seeing none, if we can pop on over, cast our votes. Missing one. Trustee Bow? No, I know it's difficult with the weather, so. Awesome. And that carries unanimously. Thank you so much. We're going to try to get through the last of these, which is 5.2.8, the Health and Safety Policy, Report Number 22046. I'll read the motion and then be resolved that the director develop a health and safety policy by the first board meeting in June. Trustee Rocha, would you like to move this?
I would.
And trustee Collard, would you like to second this?
Thank you, yes.
Would you like to speak to it?
Sure, I'll speak to it. So part of the Governance Standing Committee's review in keeping with our policy and procedure framework, every policy and procedure needs a companion piece. And we identified several admin procedures that didn't correspond to a policy, that being one that related directly to health and safety. So this is our request for the director to develop a health and safety policy. We're not saying it has to be called health and safety, but it should be covering all the health and safety matters that we have. And the reason also behind a push for this policy is that it is really important for the public to know how the board reaches its decisions. We want to be as transparent as possible to the public. And by developing this policy, it'll be clear how we gather our information, how we assess it, and how we arrive at the decisions we make. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Garrett, you have a question?
I do. Thank you through you to trustee Rocha. I'm really not understanding why we need to write this. And maybe you can clarify it for me because I was of the understanding for a very long time that the health and safety policy of the Halton District School Board, or any place for that matter, is actually the Occupational Health and Safety Act. And that's what we're bound by as a workplace. But correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Trustee Rocha?
Technical little glitches here. Amy, trustee Collard, do you want to take it?
Yes, thanks. The Health and Safety Occupational Health and Safety Act would be one of the references in a policy regarding health and safety. It is not the only thing to which we would be answerable. And we do have a policy in place that says that every procedure will be attached to a policy. And currently, all of our health and safety procedures are not attached to a policy. This is an umbrella policy. It is basically going to say that all of these pieces of health and safety fall under this policy. And it will have all of the legal references that are required to ensure that the public is aware of what is driving the procedures. It makes the accountability piece transparent to the public.
May I have a follow-up, please?
You may.
Thank you. From what I understand, and again, I've been trained by the Halton District School Board, actually, on health and safety. So that's why I'm querying this so much. The Occupational Health and Safety Act is a provincial document that we must, that trumps all. And it touches on education, it touches on everything. So I'm not really are we rerating the Occupational Health and Safety Act? Like, I don't know why we need this. I'm probably not going to be in agreement with this, sorry.
May I make an attempt again? Yep. So an umbrella policy is merely a policy statement. And then underneath embedded are all of the links to government documents, legislation that deal with health and safety. The Occupational Health and Safety Act is only one of those things. There are many, many legislative acts that would need to be referenced there, including the Education Act. There are sections of the Education Act that speak to health and safety. And those sections need to be referenced there so that the public can readily find the information regarding the health and safety of staff, students, and community with respect to our schools and our functions. And we do have a policy that says we must have a policy for every procedure. Procedures without policies don't have, it's like the hanger. You have a hanger and you put clothes on it. The clothes are the procedure, the hanger is the policy. If you don't have a hanger, the clothes are on the floor. We're not going to redefine anything. We are merely giving information in a policy.
Okay. All right. Are there any further questions before we go to vote? Trustee Garrett.
Sorry, I have to ask another question. So are we going to see this before it becomes a policy? You guys are going to write it and then we're going to take a look at it?
Okay. I think that they asked the director to
Right.
What does the Director think of this?
Thank you so much through you, Chair Shuttlesworth, to Trustee Garrett and the rest of the trustees. As a staff, you know, we are moving in the direction of trying to make sure that we have the companion policies that support the procedures that we have in our Board. I know there are some gaps that we are trying to work towards filling, and this is one of them. We, you know, speaking with staff, I think this is something that we can accomplish. And we look forward to bringing this back to either to the Board or to a Committee of the Whole prior to the Board for further discussion.
Great. Thank you so much. Seeing no more questions. If everybody can pop on over to vote, please. Wonderful, and that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. So as promised, we're going to take a little break before we move on to communication from the Board. So if we can come back in five minutes. So again, we're going to go for 9:13 if that works for you. Actually, it's six minutes, but 9:13, come back in five minutes. So we'll see you all then. Thank you so much. Getting my mouse back on the right screen. All right, are we ready to go? I see four of us. And Director Anis? Five, six. Wonderful, so that's... Well, so Trustee Bowe and Trustee Vajilin Kar, are you back?
Yes, we are. I don't know if it's working.
Okay, wonderful, okay. Okay, we are now up to Item 6.0, Communication to the Board, and 6.1, which is the Student Trustee Report. Trustee Vajilin Kar and Trustee Bowe, do you have a report for us this evening?
Yes, to do.
To the Chair. Wonderful. I'll pass the floor over to you both. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We hope you all had a lovely March break. We'd like to begin with some Student Senate updates. So since we've last presented, our Subcommittee Chairs have selected elementary and secondary students from across our Board who are not part of the Senate to join our Senate Subcommittee. So this is the first time that we're opening up our subcommittees. And last year, actually, was the first time we even introduced the Subcommittee. So it's great to have it run for a second year and now to have it open to more students. Each Subcommittee selected four to six students outside of the Senate from each region. And we're really looking forward to working with these new Subcommittee members. So far, our Subcommittee Chairs have had very positive feedback on this new addition. And everyone is super eager and engaged in the work. Some other Subcommittee and regional updates. Firstly, our Learning and Achievements Subcommittee has been doing a lot of great work. Firstly, they have been working on a number of projects, starting off with working towards launching a pilot project for a peer tutoring initiative in elementary schools. They're also planning a Board-Wide Student Pathways Panel for elementary students so that they can hear from secondary students in the programs that they may be interested in pursuing after elementary school. And lastly, they're working on a series of workshops for secondary students to be connected with graduates who have chosen to pursue various post-secondary pathways. So for example, vocational studies, college apprenticeships, universities, et cetera. They hope that these workshops will allow for secondary students across the Board to learn more about the different pathways that exist after high school and also offer them the opportunity to network with graduated students who they may not have had the chance to connect with otherwise. We also have an update from our Milton and Halton Hills region. Our Regional Director for Halton Hills, Yara Mira Solja, and Regional Director for Milton, Ashia Dewan, have been working on planning a Northern Symposium for Students Living in the North. Historically, the Student Senate has had some challenges engaging with students from Milton and Halton Hills. So we wanted to host this Symposium to widen accessibility and bridge the gap between the Senate and students in the North. Senators are very excited about hosting this event and are also hoping to invite senior staff to speak with attendees. Speaking of symposiums, we have an update on our Health and Youth Leadership Symposium. Our Directors of Operations, Gaurisha Sani and Julia Rayner-Biben, have finalized the workshops for the event, and our Senators have begun planning. Our workshops include the following: Entrepreneurship and Financial Literacy, Public Speaking and Debate, High School Survival Guide, Diversity and Inclusion, a new addition is Coding and Technology, Environmental Climate Activism, and Leadership 101. With that, I will pass it over to Trustee Bowe.
Thank you, Trustee Vajilin Kar, and fingers crossed my Wi-Fi works. So we've also gotten a lot of interest from our Senators in being a part of our Indigenous realities and awareness of the Committee with the Indigenous Rights and Education Team who have been supporting this creation of the Subcommittee and also the interested Senators to discuss the focus and the goals of the group and how we can approach the Subcommittee in a respectful way. Now, in terms of masking, we've heard a lot from students and our Senators on the change in masking. So in some of the Halton Hills schools, we've heard that there is a bit of a divide amongst students who choose to mask because they or their close ones are immunocompromised and students who choose not to mask. We've also found that some students will keep their masks on for some classes and take them off for others for a variety of reasons. For example, if the classroom is really hot, they might choose to take it off, or depending on how close they sit with their peers. Here in Milton, we've seen that some students choose to mask while others don't. But everyone seems to be respectful of one another's decisions. And many students are still getting used to the change. And in Oakville, we've heard that most students and staff have been keeping their masks on. And as time goes on, people have gotten more comfortable with unmasking. In some Burlington schools, we've heard that generally, students have continued wearing masks. And they believe they are responsible enough to handle the change. Now, in elementary schools, we've heard from our Senators that most of the intermediate students have continued masking, while some of the younger students from kindergarten to grade three have chosen not to mask. We've also heard that students who are taking in-person classes, they feel a bit of social anxiety, some of them. So that might stem from not wanting to show their faces, feeling shy if they're new, or concerns with their physical appearances. And some people believe that the mask kind of gave them a cover. Some students say that they come to school with a mask on because of their parents, but they choose to take it off afterwards. There are a little bit of concern with bullying in the elementary students. So some students may feel excluded because of their family's decision to continue masking. For example, if their friends don't wear masks, but they choose to, they might feel excluded or feel left out. Virtual students don't really feel a difference, but they seem to be glad. And overall, we've heard from students that most students feel comfortable and they don't feel unsafe, which is the most important part with this new change. And more importantly, everyone seems to be respectful about each other's decisions. So thank you for listening to our report and happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for our two student trustees? So I have one. So I do have... Regarding the masking, thank you so much, Trustee Bowe, for that report. I think that's really important to hear. I'm just wondering what students feel the most important message is to get out about masking today? It's kind of a hard question, but I don't know if you can maybe think about it. What's their message?
Trustee Vajilin Kar, like, add on if you feel like. But from my end, I feel like just being respectful of each other's decisions. If a student chooses to mask, respect their decision. And if they choose not to mask, respect that as well.
Yeah, I echo Trustee Bowe's comments. I think the government has made it clear that masking is an option at this point. And so all that's really left for us to do is respect everyone's decisions and, you know, encourage a positive and kind school environment, which is, I think, what our administrators have been doing. And I think students are also encouraging.
Wonderful, thank you. Really appreciate that. Thank you so much again for such a wonderful report. How is also... How is HQLS planning coming along?
It's good. It's good. One thing that maybe we wanted to add into the report, but we kind of glossed over a little bit, was that we don't have a date yet for HQLS. And it's typically at the end of May, but we're sort of hopeful that maybe we can have some maybe in-person or hybrid element to HQLS this year, if possible, because now that restrictions are lifted and things seem to be returning to the quote-unquote "normal."
Wonderful. Well, again, thank you so much, both of you, for your wonderful report again. And as always, we look forward to your next report at our next meeting. Wait, sorry, and quickly, because I don't think we have another meeting before your next Student Senate meeting.
Our next Student Senate meeting is on April 8. We might have missed that. Sorry about that. And it's from 6 to 9, and all trustees and senior staff are welcome. We'll send out a link.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for all the questions. I just had one little one. Wonderful, thank you so much. Okay, we're now up to Item 6.2, which is an adjustment to the agenda, which we have one item for action at our next Board meeting for April 6, which is Item... It was Item 5.2.6, but is now Item 6.2.1, the Trustee Expense Governance Procedure, Report Number 22044. Trustee Collard and Trustee Rocha, would you like to speak to this, please?
Well, yeah, sure, I can speak to it. There are some very minor changes. One of the changes was because there was a change in how we submit our mileage expenses. So that needed to be reflected in the report because we no longer use the spreadsheet. We're now using the same system as staff. And the other change was to bring forward the recommendation that we should have an annual governance training for all trustees. And that was recommended to us by the Director as well as by our Chair. And then we embarked and had our first session, and we received good feedback on it. And again, further recommendations that this would be good for us as ongoing professional development. And so that is an expense that would come out of the prior term reserve. And that's why it is included in the trustee expenses report procedure.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Trustee Collard regarding this item? Great, so this again will come back to our next Board meeting, which gives both us, the Board, and the public time to consider the item. And we look forward to voting on this next time. Thanks so much, Trustee Collard. That brings us up to Item 6.3.1, the Operational Plan Midyear Update, Report Number 22037. Associate Director Bowe, I'll pass it over to you.
Thanks, ma'am Chair, through you two trustees. This is our mid-year update on our operational plan. I'd like to just start by thanking all of our staff right across the system, particularly our educators, our teachers and ECEs and EAs and our administrators who work directly with students to impact student achievement and well-being, but also all of the support staff that are in our schools, those that are regional and itinerant, and those that work in our central offices who contribute to creating the conditions for our students to be successful. A big thank you to all of them. This report is a snapshot in time, if you will. It's not meant to be an exhaustive list of work that's being done across the system, but we certainly want to keep our Board informed and give you a flavor of the work that's underway this year. We hope we have the balance right. We always struggle a little bit with... Uh, we hope we have the balance, right? We always struggle a little bit with how much to include. And would certainly be happy for, for any feedback around whether this report is meeting the needs of our, of our trustees. Um, it's also a report that's a compilation of work by all of our senior team. And so, uh, if there are questions, I know we'll farm those out. Either the director can ask the appropriate superintendent or I can certainly direct those questions to to those superintendents. And we're, we're happy to answer any questions that trustees have. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Do any trustees have any questions regarding the mid-year update to the operational plan? Vice Chair Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, I have two questions from different areas of the report. The first one is, uh, with respect to incorporating a whole person approach that includes cognitive, emotional, social, spiritual, and physical development as well as academic development. One of the items listed here is our stress and coping kits provided to schools. Uh, and I just wonder, were those provided to all schools? And what, what makes up a stress and coping kit and how are they, how are they working?
Uh, you are on mute, uh, associate director Vog.
Oh, thank you. My apologies. I was just saying that superintendent Barn has lit up and I think he's the right person to answer that question.
Oh, through you, vice chair, to vice chair. So this was a summary of a number of things we've done going back to the start of the school year. And that was one of the points in time where various wellness tools. Sometimes it could be balls, some kinds of different types of um, materials that support students' wellbeing. So that's, um, that's what that, uh, those kits are. And they're actually coordinated through our social workers and CYCs in schools. So, um, you know, it's, it's gone well. Um, also, schools have also uh, ac- access funding through the Hall and Learning Foundation throughout the year. And various schools have also got a number of different wellness aids to support students. And some of them are, like I said, are hands-on tools. Some of them are, are other types of supports to help them. I hope that answered, answered your question.
Yes, thank you. And it's just something I was interested in because wellness, uh, mental health are certainly a huge uh, thing, particularly at this moment in time. And as we go into the budgeting cycle, I hope that we maintain or increase resources for things that are supportive in this area. So that's where that question came from. And Madam Chair, I have a separate question. I can go back on the speaker's list, but it might just be me again.
No, I have a question, but you go ahead, vice Chair Harrison, and I'll ask after you.
Okay, uh, sure. Thank you. The second question is with respect to promoting innovative strategies that connect learning to the world and prepare students for a dynamic future. Uh, I'm interested in two things, just to learn a bit more. Firstly, the new initiative, school within a college, sounds amazing and I'd love to learn a bit more about it. And the other thing from that same quadrant in this report is 94 classrooms designing learning with a focus on student passion and pace. And that too also sounds uh, great. And I'd just love to learn a little bit more about those two things.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harrison. I think I'd ask Superintendent Newton or Sal Mini to maybe uh, respond.
Uh, certainly, um, through Vice Chair, uh, through the chair to Vice Chair L Harrison. I can start with school, school within a college. That's a new initiative this year that we've started. The acronym we use is SWAC, so some of you may have heard about that. Um, and we do have some staffing assigned to that. And it is about getting our students into colleges so that they're be, they're beginning to earn some college credits, um, while still in secondary school. And so we are very excited about that initiative. It is very new. It's been led by our dual credit lead in the board. Um, but certainly we, uh, as we progress in that, we can share more detailed information about successes and the numbers of students accessing that program. And I see that Superintendent Newton is ready to join.
Thank you, Superintendent Sal Mini, and to the chair. The Modern Classroom Project focuses on passion and self-paced learning. So it gives students an opportunity to dive into something that they'd like to do and go deeper with that. 91 teachers have joined this movement since last summer when Jesse Strom presented it in an evening in the summer for people to learn. And the shift folks have been sponsoring those classrooms throughout the year.
Thank you. Great stuff. Thank you so much.
Uh, thank you. So I have a question. So I'm just wondering, because this multi-year plan is somewhat either shaped or influenced by the pandemic. I'm just kind of wondering, because I know the goals are somewhat similar every time, like they have similar themes. But I'm wondering how, um, COVID has shaped or changed the way we've approached this plan?
Yeah, I, thanks for that, Chair Shalworth. I'll, I'll maybe start and other superintents may want to respond or jump in as well. I would just say, you know, as we plan our work each year for the following year, and certainly there's no question the pandemic has influenced where our focuses are. But we do keep that multi-year plan as our anchor and we, uh, we, we connect the work to that multi-year plan. Those five pillars, I think, are as relevant today as they were two years ago when we, uh, when we created that plan. Um, our emphasis has been more around recovery, learning, inclusion, and particularly wellbeing. Um, and you've, you've seen that work from superintendent, superintendent Barnes's department and our equity folks, really right across the board. Um, so there is a bit more emphasis around those areas. Um, but we're still ultimately, uh, you know, looking at student achievement and all those other pieces as well. So others may want to, want to weigh in, but I would say our, you know, our, our, our focus hasn't changed dramatically. But the emphasis on those three areas, wellbeing, inclusion, and sort of recovery learning have, have certainly been a little bit more heightened, I would say, in terms of our resource allocation.
Thank you. Um, does anybody else have any further questions regarding this piece this evening? Wonderful. So again, uh, associate director Vog and all staff, thank you so much for your hard work on this. On behalf of all the trustees, we really appreciate the dedication you take to ensuring our learning is an effective and welcoming place for all the students within our board. We really do appreciate it. So thank you so much. Okay, we're now up to item 6.4, notices of motion. Are there any notices of motion for this evening? Trustee Reynolds.
Uh, thank you. Uh, my colleague trustee Oliver and I are bringing a motion to the table on behalf of trustees Bow and Vijila Kara. Uh, the intent of the motion is to request board advocacy in support of student trustees um, as they can move motions or second at the board table. Uh, as a courtesy, this motion will be shared with, um, all the trustees in advance so that you can, um, provide any comments or consideration. And certainly it will reflect, um, the conversations that had already happened at the committee, the table meeting, um, that we had last. Um, and I don't know if the student trustees have anything to add to that.
Uh, trustee Vijila Kara. Uh, through the chair, I'd just like to echo trustee Reynolds' comments. Uh, we will be taking back the, we have taken back the feedback we received during committee of the whole. Um, and we look forward to sharing this motion at our next board meeting.
Wonderful. And I'm sure we look forward to receiving it. So thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, trustee Oliver and trustee Reynolds and trustee Vijila Kara. I know trustee Bow's been popping in and out. She's been struggling with her internet, so I'm sure she's excited about this as well. But thank you to the four of you. Okay, Director Ennis, we're now up to your director's report. And as of right now, we have three items. Uh, the ministry memo, which is lifting of health and safety measures in schools, library staffing, and others. And I'm going to pass it over to you.
Thank you so much, Chair Shalworth, and good evening once again, trustees and to everyone watching. Uh, it gives me great pleasure as director to say that I continue to lead with the confidence of an, a stellar team that supports me and support the work that we do in our multi-year plan in the Halton District School Board. And, uh, I, I gotta say that this team is extremely, extremely, uh, efficient and effective and, um, and just highly, highly, um, you know, their, their, their level of, um, responsiveness, highly, highly responsive to schools and their needs. And I'm just grateful for their leadership. So, uh, with that, I know there are a number of items that I want to, I just wanted to acknowledge them before we go any further. And, uh, the first item that we have up is the lifting of the mandates. And I know that superintendent Blackwell, who's been leading this work, uh, will be supporting us here this evening.
Uh, thanks, Director Ennis, and through the chair to all trustees. Um, we did have an emergency, um, board meeting on last Friday, I think. Um, and we're able to provide some information on some of the logistics and what it would look like this week. I'm happy to say that, uh, much of what we thought was going to and planned for is what, you know, uh, happened. Um, you know, to welcome students back, um, some comfort level in coming back, some real excitement around no cohorts outside for elementary. I know that was a big one. Um, and lots of, uh, support for staff and, and from staff and for our families and our students. And I think we're, we're settling in, um, as we always do, uh, with a lot of preparation. Uh, our staff are very committed to welcoming and making sure our students are okay. And they also do a great job of supporting each other. Uh, we recognize that families, uh, receive a lot of different communication. Um, we did share some communication on masking and we have, uh, updated our communication uh, a couple of times and just want to make sure that, that families are, uh, aware of some of the masking requirements because there are times where masking, uh, is required. And thank you to our student trustees for sharing, uh, some of the insights in terms of what's happening from the student perspective. Um, so we, we know that anyone that returns from travel internationally must be masked for 14 days. Uh, the word exemption, uh, in the federal travel guidance is a little bit confusing because it is being confused with a mask exemption, uh, which is also being used in a neighboring board. Uh, our mask exemption process has not changed. So we have students that, uh, are unable to remove a mask when they're required to wear a mask. And, uh, that requires medical documentation from a physician or a nurse, a nurse practitioner. Uh, the exemption reference in the federal travel guidance, which is a little bit confusing, uh, is talking about, uh, the requirements where somebody has to cross the border on a regular basis. They're exempt from all of the federal restrictions. So it's a little bit of, uh, of mixed wording. I, I guess for families, the easiest thing to do would be to consider that, uh, when planning international travel, they knew they need to wear, um, masks. And that's for our staff as well. Um, when you return to our board, masking is required 14 days. The other consideration is with isolation. If someone tests positive for COVID and their isolation is five days, uh, they are required to mask for 10 days following, uh, their positive test. And a reminder that having symptoms, uh, that are aligned to COVID, uh, that's considered positive results. So COVID positive results are presumed with symptoms. Uh, so students may come back from isolation, but they may have to continue wearing a mask for five days. Uh, and then the third condition that's required is, uh, again, household member changes, uh, around isolation requirements. We've communicated that a couple of times, uh, through the last week. So it is posted in our board website. If you are an asymptomatic household member that is permitted to be at school and someone at home has COVID, uh, you are still required to wear a mask for 10 days. So we'll see kids and staff come in and out of, with masks. And, uh, obviously, we won't be asking people why they're wearing masks. We know that they're doing the right thing as they always have. I talked a little bit about respect earlier on and respecting, um, people's decisions to mask wear. Um, so some of those are, are meeting the public health, uh, conditions that are met. And the final thing is around the, the COVID screening tool. It has been changed again. Uh, we would ask families to go through that with their children. And on the very last screen where it says, go to school, if you scrolled, scroll and scroll and scroll on your device, you will see all of what I just said in writing in terms of the requirements for masking. So that will help people see, where do I find this? Because I know people have found different sources of information. Uh, and it's trying to navigate everything, but it is succinct, uh, at that site. Um, I think I want to turn it over to, if I could, Director Ennis, turn it over to Superintendent Sal Mini to talk about a, a, a new decision around masking that has just occurred today, uh, when we're by the senior team.
Thank you, Superintendent Blackwell. Um, so as, uh, you have just heard, there are times when students are required to wear a mask and Superintendent Blackwell has outlined those. We also know that there are students who are choosing, um, to wear masks of, for a variety of reasons. And over the past two years, we have had the direction from, uh, the Ministry of Education that students, uh, should not participate in high-intensity activities, um, while wearing masks. And so some of you may have had, um, some messages from families too. We did put out messaging yesterday to elementary schools indicating that students who are, uh, required to wear masks or choose, uh, to wear a mask should not be participating, uh, in high-intensity extracurricular activities uh, for safety reasons, because that was the guidance that we had been operating under. Uh, we know this was very disappointing to many students and families. We did seek further clarification from the Ministry of Education as well as, uh, public health. And, and so we've learned that while the Ministry of Education stated that high-intensity activities should be avoided by masked students, uh, they in fact, um, could participate masked based on student and, and family choice. So we have given, um, new direction to our elementary and secondary schools. And it pretty much is that, um, students who either are required to wear a mask or are choosing to wear a mask may participate in high-intensity extracurricular activities to the extent that they can because we certainly continue to be concerned about, uh, our students' health and safety and exertion. Um, and so this is at the discretion of the students and families. And staff should work with masked students to ensure that, uh, they monitor themselves during play and adjust their level of activity as required. Um, and during instructional, a lot of extracurricular activities, uh, we ask staff to make sure that there are differentiated opportunities for students who are masked, including those that are, um, low impact. So I think that, uh, that message, um, certainly was probably well-received by our schools and will be, um, in the coming days, uh, by our students. And so that is a change in direction.
Okay, thank you. Uh, wondering if there are no questions. I can move to the next item.
We do have a question, uh, trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Through the chair, this is more a comment. And I really appreciate, um, the reviewing the new, uh, guidance, um, for the, uh, students who, um, choose to mask and, um, want to participate in a high-intensity activity. Um, I also appreciate very much to know that the, um, screening tool has been updated. Uh, and that, uh, that, that the very bottom, it speaks to, uh, the need to continue to mask if, uh, out of the country. Um, because that, that certainly is an area that I've, um, been dealing with a lot of questions from, um, community members who were, you know, assumed they didn't have to mask because they were vaccinated. And so this new requirement, as of March 21st, I'm so glad that it's, um, also documented here as well as aligned with our board directions. So just, just, uh, wanted to, um, uh, So just wanted to, you know, amplify it, because I think it's a really confusing piece. So thank you for discussing that this evening.
Great. Thank you. Director Ennis, I see no more questions.
Thank you so much, Chair Sheldon Worth. I'm going to ask Superintendent Proto to come forward at this time and discuss the library staffing. Go ahead, that's clear.
Thank you, Director Ennis. Through the chair to all the trustees, good evening. So we have had a change in staffing for our elementary libraries. The team has had a lot of discussion around the impact from COVID, two years of disrupted learning. And one of our greatest concerns is early literacy, also numeracy, but early literacy. This is not a budget cut, but an optimizing of resources, we hope. We would love to continue with having both, as many programs as we possibly can to address those issues, but without additional funding, we've made the decision to cut the elementary library teacher position and use those resources to create learning resource teacher positions. So what that means is every school, every elementary school of the 89 schools had a partial teacher librarian in them that equated to about 21 full-time positions, so all of the positions were part-time. Instead, we're going to be hiring for September approximately 15 learning resource teachers. Those teachers will be sent to the schools with high needs, high literacy needs, to have direct targeted support for the students who are having severe lagging literacy skills. It was a very difficult decision. There are, all 89 elementary schools are impacted. There wasn't a single elementary school that had a full-time librarian currently. Most of the schools had point two, so one day per week, they had someone in there. Additionally, to make sure that our libraries are functioning as best we can without that position, we're hiring more library technicians and doing an analysis of how many staff we need per school, how many hours to make sure that the library can function. We'll be doing substantial professional development with the library technicians in the fall to make sure that they have all of the skills they need to go into that space now without the extra support of the teacher that's there. One of the big questions that we've been getting is what happens to the teaching that was happening in the library, which was a fantastic teaching, definitely. All of the curriculum that was covered by the teacher librarians does fall within the curriculum for classroom teachers. So they were already covering that material and will continue to do so. Another question I've had is will the libraries still be open? The libraries will still be open with the technician, making sure that the class or the library is functioning. And then we'll also be working with principals in September to say, how do we make sure that the space can be optimized? And how do we operationalize some of the things that were being done before and make sure that they're running as best they can be? Again, I just want to repeat, not an easy decision. I have had a meeting with a drop-in with all of the teacher librarians that wanted to come to answer their questions, and am also having a meeting with all of the technicians to discuss what it'll look like for them in the fall. And happy now to take any questions that you might have.
Great. Thank you so much. Trustee Grabens.
Yes, thank you. Through the chair. Boy, this was, when I heard about this, I was very sad. I'm the daughter of a teacher librarian, and I know that there, my mom spent a lot at the secondary level. There's a lot of work that goes into that that supports the schools, and it's frustrating. I wonder about things like we had been moving towards more learning commons and creating maker spaces and all those things that, you know, are interesting, pulling kids into the libraries. And I wonder if this decision is a final, I understand the implications around because of the pandemic, but can we look at this in the future to bring them back? It's, I would hate to see this teacher librarians just disappear in our elementary schools. It is, it is a devastating decision. And I was just wondering if, you know, if that thought, because I know library technicians are not teacher librarians, very, very different roles. They're all about the technical part, the processing of the materials rather than the, you know, the integration and pedagogy that teachers work together for the curriculum. So I just, is there any thought to reconsidering this in the future once those gaps are mitigated even a bit?
Through the chair to trustee Grabens, I hear you. Funding permitting, definitely, and doing an analysis, an ongoing analysis of data that we get back from our literacy scores and closing those gaps. Absolutely, that is definitely very possible. It is a different role. We were right in the middle of running a system-wide committee called Reimagining Libraries, where we were highlighting the coding, the, you know, the different things above and beyond the books that are happening in libraries and learning commons now. And then this happened right in the middle of it, and so that's been very difficult too. With the secondary, we're still continuing with all of that, and hopefully, again, funding permitting, we would be able to have both positions, or we will continue to look at what has been the impact of moving to these LRT positions, and have they been successful and are they continuing to be needed?
Thank you.
I have a follow-up. Can I follow up? And I'm just wondering, has, I know that the province has been talking about its concern about the gap in learning that has grown over the pandemic, and obviously, the funding that they have mentioned is not adequate. Should we be advocating for more funding for that so that we don't have to make these choices?
Through the chair to trustee Grabens, I would say advocating for more funding is always a wonderful idea. We don't even know how dire it is right now. These positions will be to do an analysis as quickly as we can to target specific schools and specific groups of students. There has been some other funding that's come forward, as you know, so we're looking at putting other things in place right now. We want to come at this from every possible angle, because as you also know, early literacy creates exponential deficits for students as the curriculum becomes more difficult and the language becomes more difficult. So that's why we want to work on this from as many angles as we can from early on. But if we had the funding to continue the teacher librarian role and to supplement the literacy supports in schools, we would definitely be doing both. Your advocacy would be welcomed.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we've got quite a list, so I'll just read them out. So it's trustee, or vice chair Harrison, then trustee Gray, then trustee Oliver, trustee Amos, and then trustee Reynolds. So vice chair Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I seem to recall a few years ago, we had a similar discussion at the secondary level. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And if library technicians are in place in some schools already, I'm imagining that that's working well. And although I too am saddened by the change, it's about how to make this work until we can either morph back to something again. But so anyways, I just wonder whether there is a transition plan in place and whether we can somehow draw on those positive experiences where schools already have this system in place and how they're still managing to, you know, have learning commons and do all of those great things in these spaces that we've invested so much in.
Through the chair to trustee L Harrison. Thank you for the things that you're bringing up. Absolutely, we're working on a plan. As I've mentioned, we've met with the teacher librarians to answer questions. We've had some feedback from them, but we are also meeting with the technicians, and we do have a manager of libraries who's been doing this for quite some time, and she is phenomenal. We're not saying this is going to be easy. Also, the context from one school to another is quite different. I've spoken to a few of the elementary principals, some of whom have said, you know, they're just starting to manage what this could look like, and others have said they've had a staff team put in place already to talk about who else could be supporting the library in different capacities. So people are starting to problem solve, which is important, but it will be, it will be a climb to make sure that we're offering as much as we possibly can to maximize that resource using technicians instead of the teacher librarians, but there will be professional development starting soon and continuing all through the fall with both the technicians and the principals to try and maximize that space.
Thank you. And may I just follow up? Please, just to ask, the teacher librarians, will they be returning to classrooms then?
The answer is a little bit, there's several different positions. There was not a single full-time librarian in any school, so all of them were part-time and all of them had a supplemental role within the school. Sometimes it was classrooms, sometimes it was like a student success type position, they were certs, so there won't be job loss because of this. There will be altering jobs. There may be a teacher who has very low seniority, and because of the staffing at that particular school, they may be placed at a different school by the time that staffing is all said and done. But the majority will be going back to, yes, classroom or assert role or something along those lines.
I see Superintendent Todd has already also come on.
Yeah, thank you, Director Ennis, through you, Chair Sheldon Worth, to trustee L Harrison. Yeah, as Superintendent Proto pointed out, there is no job loss. I want to remind everyone on this call that there is a surplus process within a school that will absorb those teacher librarians to other assignments. And also, I would like to add that, you know, as a growth board, we've always been able to absorb any attrition that occurs or repurposing of jobs through growth or attrition. Also, the addition of LRTs, as Superintendent Proto pointed out, that this is, this is not necessarily about eliminating jobs. It's about making the choice of, given the dollars that we have, that we add LRTs at this, at this point. And we've had those conversations with our union partners, reassuring them this is not about members being laid off. But yes, a teacher librarian who had a point two of an assignment in a particular school, maybe reassigned to a different assignment within the school or to a different school, but again, there's no job loss in relation to repurposing the teacher librarian role. And again, I also want to make it clear that we're not in any way shifting the duties and responsibilities of a teacher librarian onto the library technicians, as others have pointed out, there are two different job classifications. The function, you know, the library will exist, the function of, you know, the concept of students engaging in the library will also exist. It's been happening in a variety of ways. Ideally, we would want, we would want a teacher librarian in every school, we would want an LRT in every school, but as we all know, there are choices to be made. So as far as job cuts, this will not result in job losses.
Thank you. Trustee Gray, then Oliver, then Amos, and Reynolds.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, and this question perhaps for Director Ennis. I really share the concerns expressed by trustee Grabens. I'm very saddened by this. So are members of the community that I've heard from, and I wonder, Director Ennis, if you would be able to have a report brought back to the trustees to let us know what it may look like. Like, I'm hearing lots of ideas here tonight, but I really struggle with knowing what it looks like right now and what our libraries will look like in the future. We know that we have tremendous investments in our library materials and and we have investments in their value to our children, and I just, I'm trying to imagine or vision how this is going to look like in the future. And I think I heard from Superintendent Proto that there's already schools problem-solving, and they've got some great ideas. And I'd really love to have a report come back to us or some informal report that lets us know what those wonderful practices are going to look like in lieu of the fact that we are losing library teachers. Is that possible, Director Ennis?
We will certainly go back and take a look at it and see what we can produce for our future, future meeting.
Thank you. So it's 10 o'clock. We are almost to the finish line. I'm just wondering if anybody wants to hazard a guess as to how long an extension we should put in place. We are on library staffing. We have the infamous other from Director Ennis. Vice chair Harrison, are there any questions from the public?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There is one, yes.
Okay, so gauging our question time, had anybody, 10:45 I have. So if we say 10:45 and aim to finish earlier than that, that way we're not having to break again. Do I have somebody to move that time? Any, and second, perfect. Do we have any objections to that extension? Great. See, then we're in session until 10:45. We're now on to trustee Oliver, then Amos, and then Reynolds.
Yes, thank you. Through your chair to the director. So certainly, I share the sentiments expressed by the trustees who spoke before me about the teacher librarian position and the loss of that in our schools. I've had several emails from parents in my community who expressed first their, I guess, applaud gratitude for the role of these teachers in our schools, for the wonderful job that they do and the creative approach that many of them take in working with our students. And these parents also expressed concern for whether these teachers will be able to remain on in their school. So to recap, what I'm hearing is that there will be no job loss, that these teachers will be absorbed into their school community as much as possible or moved to another school, that the library technicians will receive some professional development but will not be taken on the role of the library teachers, or sorry, the teacher librarians, and that what the teacher librarians were doing, the way they were teaching and what they were teaching and how they were working with their students is part of the curriculum and will be continuing in the classrooms. And there'll be an expectation that those activities continue to carry on just in, you know, in a different format and within the classroom space. And I'm pleased to hear that, of course, priority continues to be paid to literacy as that is a predictor of student success. So I, I guess I'm just, you know, want to reassure the teachers and the parent community that while there is a shift and how this is going to be done, the teachers will be taken care of in that they will be remaining in their jobs or similar jobs as much as possible, and that there is potential for advocacy for continuing funding in the future. Thank you.
Sorry, trustee Amos, and then Reynolds.
Thank you. Through you. Like my fellow trustees, I've heard from a number of people who were very disappointed to hear about the loss of the Like my fellow trustees, I've heard from a number of people who were very disappointed to hear about the loss of the teacher librarians. And I have to say, this is probably the third or fourth time since 2000 that it's been come up as something that was potentially going to be taken away. I'm glad to hear that we're going to have the library technicians, but I'm still concerned about some of the programs such as Forest of Reading and other activities like that, that the teacher librarians would bring in and involve a cross-section of children across the school. And is this something that the technicians will be picking up? Because it's not part of what they normally would have done. And I mean, most of our libraries haven't had a dedicated librarian for a long time, so they haven't been in the library all the time. But there have, but the fact that they've been around so that they can help out those students who need the help in the library to maybe find the right book or to do those pieces. That's what I'm concerned about because reading, while we're we're potentially getting rid of the teacher librarian so we can bring in others who will coach those junior students. I believe some of that does happen through the library as well. So I just know how important reading is to students. And while we're not losing it, I just don't want, I want to make sure that the people that are going to be picking up some of those pieces are going to be helping facilitate some of those pieces. So I guess that's my question. Is that what we're expecting? Because I know it's not a pure library technician job that way. But are they going to be picking up some of those pieces?
Through the chair to trustee Amos, thank you for your question. The the crux of the professional development and redesign that'll be happening in the fall stems from what what is the library space in schools? And the library space has been misunderstood, I'm going to say, for quite some time. Oh, books are a dead medium. They're not very much. And every school has a library and every student should be able to find themselves in that library in a book. And we've just done a massive audit, an equity audit of our libraries and and what do they look like and what books are in there? And all of that work has to continue. For some students in our schools, the library is the safest place, the most comfortable place in that school. The corner that they can sit in quietly when they just need to get away from the noise is really important. And we know all of that. And can the technicians support that? They can. They can support relationships with students. They can support maintaining a positive vibrant space and help highlight the books for the students that come in and need to get lost in the book and find themselves in that space. That work can still continue. There's a real dichotomy from one school to another in the role of technician like there is with even sports or many other things in schools. There was a question, can we redefine the technician role? This was early on. And it's a little dicey to do so because this technician's passion is such and such. If you add that to every school, you could really start to make a very long list. But do you want the technician to come in, understand the context of the school and help the students be supported in what they were doing before and continue to do? Yes, I know I'm being a bit vague with it. And with the question, can we bring back from trustee Gray? A report about what is it looking like? Absolutely. I'd ask that that be in the fall so that we have the time to do the work and to have some stability. Also, I'm very conscious of not rubbing salt in the wound of the teacher librarians who are hurting right now. So although we're trying to move forward, we don't want to push anything and make that more difficult for them. But by all means, we will be able to bring back a discussion about what those spaces look like and how we're still continuing to support all students in the schools with the technician role.
Thank you. Now, what about programs like Forest of Reading and stuff? Are we going to be? You're muted.
I was just sorry, waiting for you to finish.
I just saw your lips moving. But maybe it was just out of sync.
Yes, the programs will still continue. The funding is is all still intact. And again, I all of the, yes, Forest of Reading will be there. Programs will still be there. How they're delivered to students could be very different. And again, from school to school, the context could be different. Some principals have said they have teachers that want to pick up many aspects. Let's take coding as a different example, right? That there will be teachers that want to still use that space to do coding or podcasts, things like that. But all of the resources and all of the funding are still there. It's just a matter of making sure we can disseminate that to the students in a different way than we did before.
That's great to hear. I'm really glad to hear that a lot of these programs will continue. And and I know at some schools anyway, there are different people who pick up some of the to help out the teacher librarian anyway. So but thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add my voice to my colleagues and share my concern. One of the things I was thinking about, this decision came on the heels of the Right to Read inquiry. And I'm just wondering whether will we, will this impact if our board wants to achieve those right to read recommendations? I mean, is this part, is this, does this factor into our strategy going forward?
Right to Read is has had quite a ripple effect across the province, but is is one report of many. And you can look at the library resource, libraries as the resource in two different ways. Does it create a love of reading? Absolutely, it does. When you let students come in and discover the book that speaks most to them. We never want to discourage that. And classroom teachers are also excellent at doing that and bringing their classes to the library to continue developing the love of reading for students. Our greater worry is the student who doesn't have a home where reading is is popular or encouraged. And the literacy skills are so basic or so downplayed or so lacking that bringing them to the library, that love of reading isn't encouraged because their literacy is so weak. And so we still will always want to encourage the love of reading and do that through classrooms and do that through the resource. But the basic literacy skills are the things that we have to target so that the kids can get to that stage. They feel comfortable and confident in their reading and want to go to the library. And I started my career as, actually, it was called a literacy development instructor, working with students in grade eight who still could not read thoroughly and had fallen behind exponentially. And when you said book to them, they just got an eye twitch. They had been through years and years and years of coping mechanisms to just get through the basic curriculum because they knew they couldn't handle it. If we can get to kids at a much younger age, make sure that we build the confidence in basic reading skills, then they will have that love of reading that will carry on and then their skills just grow on their own. So is this part of our way forward for addressing literacy and all the things in our multi-year plan? It is. It's an unfortunate cut. It truly is. And there will be some losses because of it. But building literacy from the ground up for the kids who need it most will have a greater impact while we still make sure we we maintain the resource of the library for the kids who need to be there.
And I've noticed that Superintendent Samini has jumped on with respect to the right to read Superintendent Samini.
Yeah, thank you, Director Ennis, through the chair to all the trustees. Yes, the right to read for sure is is going to be a big multi-year, you know, piece of work in terms of implementation, both for the ministry provincially and for us here at the board. And we've already started some cross-departmental work with special ed services this year. So we're getting started, but certainly there is a lot more to do. And the role of the LRT will be key also in in terms of moving that work forward in our schools. And so any increase in in full-time staffing in that area will certainly help to move those recommendations forward. And we're looking at, you know, how are we going to be redefining that rule as we start to implement all of those recommendations in the right to read too. So certainly, the reallocation of this full-time equivalent of teachers will support the implementation of right to read as we proceed.
Thank you for that clarity. I really, I'm grateful that we'll be hearing more about the change and how, you know, you're you see the way forward in in addressing the literacy pieces and and the ministry expectations. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair to the director. So following my comments, I did have a question. Recognizing that we continue to place priority in literacy in light of the questions that were just posed to Superintendent Proto. We know that the teacher librarians played often a very unique and special role in in the lives and the education of our young learners. With the removal of that role, how is that going to play out? How will those students who are struggling with reading, how how will they be supported in, you know, in 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 an environment where perhaps, you know, the classroom might not be their ideal place? It might be too early for you to speak because I I understand that that you you're still reworking all of that. But I'm just wondering, we know so many students benefited from the special and unique programs offered by teacher librarians. And so I'm just wondering what what that will mean going forward, what that might look like for for students.
Superintendent Proto, can you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Through through the chair to trustee Oliver. It's a tough question because any student who's struggling in a classroom is already on the radar of the fantastic classroom teacher. And if they need differentiated learning because that classroom, as you mentioned, is not the most ideal space for that individual student, that's on their radar and differentiation and learning is something that our board has spent a decade implementing into everything that we do. So although the library sometimes for students has been a bit of an escape or a better learning space for them, that doesn't need to fully change. They've had the ability to go down and work with the teacher librarian periodically, possibly in, you know, different schools here and there. Will that still continue? That can still continue with their classroom teacher. That can still continue with assert in the school, student success. Sometimes you'll see a vice principal or a principal working one-to-one with the student that really needs that. So knowing your learner really as the classroom teacher is the most important aspect of this. And then the library, although we are losing a body, it was often one day a week that the librarian was in there. They had some tasks they had to complete and they were hopefully working with some students and they did. They really did. The space will still be there. If it was the space that was the catalyst for support for that student, the space is still there and the classroom teachers know their students and will know that aspect. We have to trust in them. We have fantastic educators. And so the know your learner profile and then the differentiation of how you support each student, especially those at risk, will be the thing that will continue and and continue to support those kids.
Thank you. And again, thank you again for all of your passion in the work with the librarians that you're doing. I look forward to hearing, you know, as you said, back in September, when you're going to come and give us an update just to see how things are going. I think it's really important for us as trustees to keep our finger on that pulse, just to to keep keep aware and know what's going on. So again, thank you so much, Superintendent Proto. All right, Director Ennis, back to you. Last piece.
Thank you so much, Chair Shalloworth. I just wanted to add my voice to the conversation on the librarians and just to say quickly that I know that librarians have played a tremendous role in just about all of our lives and has contributed greatly to to who we are as a person and the identities that we've developed and particularly our love of reading. And so I know it evokes very strong and visceral reactions. And I certainly understand that. But hopefully, we understand as Superintendent Proto has made clear that we are going to be targeting reading. And so the role of the librarian is is not being, you know, taken away. The impact of their role will be transferred in a way that will make it more targeted and supportive for earliest readers. So I want I want everyone to hear that message loud and clear. All right. Thank you so much, Superintendent Proto. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Pajaberek and Superintendent Barnes regarding mental health video.
Good evening, everyone. Through the chair to all trustees, we'd like to show the third video in our multi-year plan series. This features none other than Superintendent Dean Barnes, who's on on camera with me as well. And through communications, as you know, we're taking, we're using these videos with all staff and putting them to the broader community just to show a bit of an accountability measure and to keep awareness high around the multi-year plan. So this one, I think you'll very much enjoy. It's about four minutes long and really highlights our mental health and wellbeing initiatives and how are we are approaching that as a board. So we'd like to play that for you. Superintendent Barnes, would you like that anything?
I just wanted to thank Superintendent Pajaberek's team for putting this together. And this is highlighting some great work being done at a number of our schools. And there's lots of great work for student wellbeing that's not in this video. We really want to celebrate the work that our staff have done to support students. So thank you.
All right, without delay, we'd we'd like to play the video now.
Welcome to our in-depth video series examining the Halton District School Board's 2020 to 2024 Multi-Year Plan. Throughout this series, we will be highlighting all five areas of focus in our strategic plan. Each area is interconnected and built on the foundation of adaptability, relationships, innovation, communication, accountability, and engagement to support students, staff, and our community as we learn, grow, and inspire together.
In the Halton District School Board's 2020 to 2024 Multi-Year Plan, the mental health and wellbeing area focuses on strengthening safe and caring environments that promote the wellbeing of all members in our community as we learn, grow, and inspire together. All HDSP staff provide an essential role in promoting student mental health and wellbeing. Student wellbeing in particular is interconnected with all areas of the multi-year plan. We know that in order for students to be well and achieve academic success, classrooms and school communities must be inclusive and affirming of diverse identities and abilities and free from harassment, racism, and discrimination. HDSP educators are committed to understanding and actively supporting an approach that includes cognitive, emotional, social, spiritual, and physical development, as well as academic development for each student. Students learn about the importance of social support and learn to identify people in their life who can help them. They learn about stress and coping skills appropriate to their developmental age. In our classrooms, each student's identity and life experiences are affirmed and valued. We strive to support students' wellbeing through supportive learning environments. At the core of a supportive classroom is a caring and engaging educator who establishes authentic, trusting relationships with each student. Educators focus on students' strengths, which forms the basis of a circle of support that begins with a teacher and parent or caregiver. When a student's needs require additional support, the circle of support is expanded. Recognizing the value of youth engagement, we encourage youth involvement and leadership in setting school wellbeing goals and activities. Schools contribute to reducing stigma, promoting positive mental health, building social emotional learning skills, preventing the development of mental health problems, identifying students in need, and establishing a circle of support. In addition to classroom instruction and activities, we have a mental health awareness campaign that includes the distribution of school posters, social media messaging, and a dedicated mental health and wellbeing webpage on the HDSP website. These resources share information and strategies to maintain and improve mental health and wellbeing and where to access help. The HDSP hosts mental health and wellbeing information sessions for parents and guardians throughout the year on specific topics based on feedback from parents. Led by a mental health expert in that area, these sessions discuss child and youth mental health and wellbeing, ways in which parents and guardians can support their children and resources available. ways in which parents and guardians can support their children and resources available. Students will experience variations in their mental health and feelings of wellbeing. Learning about the continuum of mental health helps reduce stigma by recognizing that everyone experiences fluctuations. When students are struggling with their mental health, educators reach out to these students to offer help and connect them with appropriate support and services within the board and broader community. As a board, we all have a tremendous impact on student mental health and wellbeing. The HDSP understands this and is committed to strive to strengthen safe and caring environments that promote mental health and wellbeing for all students.
Thank you. Want to thank Superintendent Barnes, the star of that video, and Superintendent Padraic, thank you, and the team. Any, any final words you want to offer?
I, I'd just like to throw to, a thanks also to, yeah, our mental health lead, Michelle Bates, and just our, our production team, one of whom is Kevin Raposo, who helps us with our board meeting. So big thanks to, to Kevin as well, who does a lot of work on these videos. And I'd just like to let trustees know that you'll be seeing the environmental leadership video. It's in production right now in a better month's time.
So thank you. Thank you Superintendent Padraic. And also just to mention the Info Center staff for their contributions to making these videos for us. Thank you so much. Next item, just want to remind you that the Director's Panel Series continues next Monday. And the topic for the next one is, of course, you know, we've had Black Excellence, we've had antisemitism. And the next one is Two-Spirit and Transgender Awareness Beyond Bathrooms. And of course, my hope is that we're going to continue to build a system and a community of kindness and acceptance and support, particularly for transgender students. And so we've got a great panel lined up. So hopefully you can join up for some or part of that series next Monday. And last but not least, I hope that all trustees will be able to join me in thanking and congratulating Superintendent Terry Blackwell, who after 31 years of a stellar career at the Halton District School Board submitted her letter of retirement. And Terry, thank you for everything that you have done and we are going to miss you for sure, especially after all, all that you have done for us, leading us through this pandemic. And thank you. Thank you so much. So let's, let's thank Terry. Wondering if, if any, Chair Shalloworth, anyone has anything to offer for Superintendent Blackwell?
Thank you. Trustees, is there any comments for Superintendent Blackwell? I know, so Superintendent Blackwell is not only a trustee, but she's also my neighbor. So she's not going far for me. So. Trustee Ennis.
Thank you. I feel like I've been here longer than a lot of the superintendents, but I know you've been at the board. It just, we haven't worked together necessarily. But Terry, you have made a huge impact since the time that you've been as a superintendent and even when you were the principal and a teacher. But, you know, you have done so much for the students, for the staff, for the system. I know I'm going to miss you. I'm going to miss your sense of humor. I'm going to miss, you know, some of your stories. It's going to be tough. You can't, this isn't your last meeting, right? Good, good. Because I, I have to be more succinct or, I don't know, better next time. But I just, I know we're going to miss you and you, and thank you for all that you have done. I, I truly appreciate it and I know everybody else does too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have lots of time to talk about it. It's not for a while. So thank you.
Yeah, we have lots of time. Oh, trustee Reynolds.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm very surprised, but I'm very, very happy for you Superintendent Blackwell. And I know we have other superintendent, Superintendent Trufan, who is also going and of course, manager court maker. So I'm, I'm, I'm feeling that we need to have a, you know, a lovely opportunity to get together and honor, you know, the journeys that you've had with this organization. Because you certainly, all three of you have, have laid a foundation for many others to follow. So, you know, I'm, I, I really, I'm in shock. But I certainly understand and I'm, I'm looking forward to celebrating very meaningfully with our, our superintendents and, and, and those who are moving on in the great, on the great outdoors. Because we're very jealous. Congratulations.
Thank you, trustee Reynolds. And this isn't the end because I know everyone, trustee Blackwell, trustee Superintendent Blackwell and Superintendent Trufan are around at least till the end of the year. So this is not the end. I'm sure there's plenty of time for us to, to say all of our wonderful things as time goes on. So thank you.
And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Ennis. Okay, so there is only one letter that's been received, which was actually received prior to half or spring break, which was from the Waterloo Region District School Board. That is attached to the agenda. Then we're up to committee reports. Are there any committee reports to be received this evening? I have not received any electronically as of yet. Trustee Danielle.
Yes, my apologies. You will be getting an accessibility committee report. I didn't realize I was using the template on the trustee assistance and I hit submit and I didn't realize that it had been disabled and gone nowhere. So a huge thanks to trustee Gribens for helping me retrieve that report. And I will be reworking it and sending it. You'll see it shortly.
Thank you so much. Trustee Oliver.
Yes, thank you. The environmental management team meets once a month. And trustee Rocha and I are the student, we're not students, we're the trustee reps on that committee. We do have two senators representing the student voice as well, one elementary and one secondary. And I just wanted to share with you an opportunity and I'm sure you had seen emails circulated by Vice Chair L Harrison from Suzanne Burwell around the need to recruit some volunteers who would like to be judges for the Generation Green Conference. It's a student-led, student conference that deals with various environmental topics. This year's topic will be around active transportation and how students can support that as a way of supporting good environmental stewardship. So if you're interested in judging a few of the submissions that will come from the students for this conference, please contact Susan Burwell. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any more committee reports? That brings us up to trustee questions and comments. Trustee Gribens.
Yeah, this is, as OPSP director, I just want to remind people to take a look at their email from earlier this week from OPSP about nominations for elective positions at OPSP. And also a reminder that the AGM is coming up this June, June 9th to 11th, I believe. And I hope to see people going.
Thank you. Trustee Bow.
Thank you. Through the chair, I just had a question to the director and possibly Superintendent Blackwell. So the student senate is currently planning a try LS for this year and a northern symposium, as we mentioned, that is a new event for this year. And we were wondering if these events could be held in person. And additionally, since the board is looking into returning into in-person meetings again, we were wondering if we can have in-person student senate meetings as well. So this, for the student senate meetings, it doesn't necessarily have to be at the board office. It could be at Gary Allen or like a bigger space. And Andy wanted me to mention that we haven't had student senate meetings since February 2020. So students are really hoping to be able to see each other in person again.
Thank you for that, trustee Bow. I'm going to ask Associate Director Vog to respond.
Thanks, Director Ennis. Through the chair to student trustee Bow. That's a great question. And certainly now we know we are able to hold meetings in person. One of the things that we've messaged to our schools just for, for everyone's awareness is to let's move slowly as we move to those larger gatherings. We know that some people may be a little bit anxious and, you know, as people get closer together and we've got some people with masks, some people without masks. We, we want to ensure that people are comfortable as we start to make those, those moves. And so I think it's something that we should probably spend some time talking about. We want to make sure people are comfortable. We want to make sure people aren't inadvertently excluded because they don't feel comfortable. And so maybe those in-person options maybe have a hybrid component so that, you know, people who aren't, aren't just quite there yet are still able to participate. So my suggestion trustee Bow would be to get your, your trustee mentors and your staff mentors together and just talk about what the plan is. We, we know we can do it. We are allowed to do that now. We just want to make sure that we, we've done it well. And, and if we're thinking about a hybrid, are there other implications around technology and those kinds of things to make sure that we, what, what we want, would like to do is actually doable from a technical perspective as well. So I, I think we should, we should have some conversation and I'm happy to join the group if, if you, if you want my help and participation as well.
Thank you so much, Assistant Director Vog. And yeah, we were definitely thinking of having a hybrid option that everyone could join and it could be more accessible. But we were just hoping that we can also have an in-person component. So definitely we can meet with our trustee mentors and it'd be nice to have you there too. Thank you.
Great. I've seen no more questions. We are now on to public questions. Vice Chair Harrison, you said that there was a question from the public.
Yes, thank you. Apologies for the delay. I just wanted to refresh and see if any others had come in. And I do believe that conceptually the question has been answered again, or answered already. It's related to the change in the libraries. But I will just read it because there are some specifics maybe that haven't been mentioned. How will extras that are done by teacher librarians be absorbed? And the person mentions book fairs and book clubs.
I'll turn this over to Superintendent Proto.
Thank you. Through the chair to the trustees. As mentioned earlier, we will have to do an audit of all of the things that are happening from one library to the next, school to school, including book fairs. That wasn't mentioned specifically. And then work with the, the school principals and the library techs to decide how each school will manage continuing to offer those supports. But the goal is to continue to offer all of the supports that are still happening in all of our schools to continue to encourage the love of reading that, that we're doing right now. So it will be one of the things that, that we're putting together in the list of managing all of the different aspects in schools and in the libraries. And we'll speak to that in the fall when we bring it back and, and talk about what's it looking like now that we've met and had some time to design the best possible situation we can.
Thank you. And that concludes the questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you Vice Chair Harrison. So just to make the public aware, there are several ways to be heard by the board. You can use this question and answer portion, which we have at the end of each of our meetings. But also, more importantly, you can either delegate the board or get in touch directly with your local trustee. We are always on the end of an email or the phone to answer your questions. And it might be a little bit more of a direct route. And with that, I think we have come to the end of our meeting. So I really appreciate everyone this evening having to weather the weather that's out there. I know that there's been lags in the audio and the videos and I know people have dropped in and out. So it's been really great to have made it through this, this meeting. So I appreciate all of your perseverance and hard work. And with that, I think we have exhausted our agenda and I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. Have a lovely evening, everyone. And if you have to travel anywhere, which I don't think anybody does, be careful that you don't float away.